One in the TV audience to our meeting tonight. I hope you had an opportunity to get outside the last couple of days. Maybe you had a chance to park your park someplace and not have to use it for a while, I hope anyway. Anyway, it's been nice and I think that helps change people's attitudes, or at least I hope it can.
We'll know after this meeting.
With that being said, we'll have roll call. Pauline?
Here.
Sheila?
Here.
Orkinhagen?
Here.
Coke?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Patton?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Will you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation where there are equal rights and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Consent calendar. Anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, speak it. Consent is... Yep. I'm sorry. Sheila?
Yes.
Orkinhagen? Coke?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First line, finance moves and ISO move to approve the bills as presented.
Give it to...
Yes. Yes, please do.
Sheila?
Yes.
Orkinhagen?
Yep.
Coke?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Hey, we're blessed with a couple of presentations, well I shouldn't say couple, a couple means two. At least three presentations tonight. All really good presentations that I think we'll all enjoy, or I know we will enjoy. First one is Mr. Fred Saylor, who does admit that he is Tony Saylor's brother, so take that as it may be. Mr. Saylor, if you want to talk to us about what KLN is and...
Tony's got all the chocolate covered stuff over here, so if you want to share some of that. Thank you, I don't want to take a lot of your time, I know you have a full agenda, but Tony got in touch with us at KLN. KLN is a manufacturing company out of Perm. We employ about eleven hundred people. Tuffy's Pet Foods, Kenny's Candies, Barrel of Fun, and also a rather new venture is Nutheads, which is where we do all the chocolate and nuts and all the fun stuff. So, it's a growing company, we could take a hundred people right now to go to work for us. We're just short that much and business is good. Excuse me, so when Tony brought this to us, we have a program called KLN for Kids, and we took it to our committee and we looked at it and we thought this is absolutely perfect. We're a family-owned company, we wanted to get behind this, we thought it was so unique. So, we made an upfront donation of twenty-five hundred, and then what we hope to do for the next five years, within the Brainerd area, we want to work with the retailers that we supply product to, and what we're going to do is we will give five percent of our wholesale costs back to this project. So, and we'll, at each of our outlets, whether it's a grocer or one of the large retailers here in the area that we do business with, we will put up the signage, it'll tell people that five percent will go back to this project at Miracle Field, and so you will have that, or the Public Works, Park and Recs would have that to work with for Miracle Field. All to go in, not only to finish off the project, but to give it some operating capital for the next five years. It's the second project we've done, this is the biggest one, we're working with Pelican Rapids. They wanted to light their baseball field, and we're doing the same thing with Pelican Rapids, but again, they just really have one grocery store there, so it's rather be somewhat limited, the help we can give, but still, it's something that Pelican Rapids, they don't, we just write them a check, it's just that easy. We keep track of what we sell to each outlet, and quarterly we send a check. So, that's the way we'll be working here in the Brainerd-Baxter area, and we're really looking forward to it. We're really proud to have our name attached to Miracle Field. So, that's very much.
Thank you very much.
Very nice.
Gonna piss to know people in high places, huh?
But unless you have any questions, again, I know you have a very busy schedule and I don't want to take a lot of time.
Go ahead.
If there's any other questions, go ahead, but I do, before I forget, I do want to make a motion.
And that's what I was gonna do. Yeah, the motion would be to authorize him forward with KLN for Kids program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, give it to Kelly. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries.
Again, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. We're proud of you.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
And Tony, thank you for getting him involved.
Brotherly love.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I've worked a lot of sweat working with Tuffy's during my teenage years. It's very nice of the Nelson family of Perm to be so generous to help us.
Is that back in the days when you were in the Dog House?
That's right. I literally was, yes.
Okay, thanks a lot, I appreciate it. Next, we have Mr. Tim Terrell with the Mississippi Headwaters Stormwater Grand Information and Application. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and City Council. I just want to say hi to you and introduce myself a little bit about Mississippi Headwaters Board. How many have you ever heard of the Mississippi Headwaters Board? Well, wow, we've got a really great informed audience, I can slip over that part and we can move along, but...
You just asked if we heard.
Oh, if you know, okay. The basic opportunity is, is the Headwaters Board started in nineteen eighties. The federal government was gonna call the Upper Mississippi wild and scenic, and that meant condemnation of land and things along that line, and Minnesota Senators and Reps stepped in and said, "We think we can do a better job in Minnesota than the federal government." And so, that bore the Mississippi Headwaters Board, and in the first, the early eighties, a lot of planning and zoning. The first, in the first four hundred miles, which starts at Lake Itasca and runs all the way down to the bottom of Morrison County is the jurisdictional area, along the river. If it's wild, it's five hundred, if it's scenic, it's a thousand. And we really helped set up a lot of planning and zoning, because back in the eighties, there just wasn't a lot of that environmental planning and zoning. Well, as the board matured and as seasons of life happened, you know, counties got really good at planning and zoning. And the board kind of struggled with a little bit as, well, what should we do? You know, should we just defund ourselves or go, what's the next step? And they really looked into several opportunities, they talked with other environmental organizations, and they decided to go ahead and hire me, and I just actually started November fifteenth of last year. So, I'm not the new Executive Director, I'm the newer Executive Director. And one of the things that we're working on is working with partners to protect cities if really don't, we don't have jurisdiction in the cities, but you know, we definitely work. So, now to really get to the stormwater part about things, where we're going with. One of the things we noticed is, and I did some research, out of the four hundred miles, there's about forty-two miles worth of city on the river that we don't have jurisdiction. Not that we want it, but generally, if you don't have jurisdiction, you generally don't get around to talk. And our board said, you know, we've got some gaps here. And we really haven't extended the arm of friendship, because you know, there really wasn't a need, it wasn't within the vision and stuff like that. But they, we had a grant that we were working on, and we finished that grant, and we had quite a bit left over, and it was for GIS planning along the river and developing some prioritization. Well, one of the things we said is, we had enough money left over, we said, and we talked with our grantor and said, "Well, how can we work with the cities?" And so, we looked at the, we looked at things, and there's two new requirements for MS four cities. That's a term for stormwater, meaning you have a certain population, there's actually five of them in the upper Mississippi, it's Little Falls, Baxter, Brainerd, Grand Rapids, and Bemidji. So, what they did is they wanted me to go around and just talk to you about a little bit what's going on, and talk about you guys, well, first of all, this all started with the fact that you guys were kind of pioneers. You and Baxter both worked, you guys worked with Buffalo Creek, working with Soil and Water Conservation District, working with HDR. Well, they saw a presentation about that and said, "Why don't we have that in all the MS four cities?" And so, we have a standardized process, because one of the things that came down is, you guys have new rules that came down from the MPCA. We're not a regulatory agency on this or anything like that, but we said, "How can we help these people?" Number one, get to know them, and number two, how can we help? So, with this other, this grant funding that we got, we're talking with the cities that haven't done this, which is Little Falls and Baxter and Bemidji and Grand Rapids, and we're just kind of doing a pre-assessment with them, you know, how much would it cost to do, very similar to what you guys did. And then, you know, if it can work, we're gonna work with HDR and kind of do the same thing you guys did on Whiskey Creek and, or Buffalo Creek, I should say. And what that will do is, when it's done and when that's over with, we're gonna get together and we're gonna talk about, you know, what did you do, how did this work? I can tell you right now, Baxter, after they got that, they made a decision at their last council meeting to go ahead and start doing a funding proposal, fund a, what's called a feasibility study. So, they got the planning grant, which was provided by the Soil and Water Conservation District, things along that line. They're moving forward with planning, so by fall they can have a good, solid plan to apply for a grant. And so, we want to get all the cities, MS four cities, along that line, and maybe when we get together, we take one big grant, you know, five cities applying for one thing, or maybe it's just individual. However works out, we really learn from each other when we discuss things, that we talked about, some of these issues, especially these new issues, because everybody, when something goes out, they're always looking on the internet as, "Well, what did this city do, what did this..." And no one wants to really make the first move. You guys really stepped up and made the first move, I brought it quickly. So, that was, kudos to you, and we want to take that and we want to look at opportunities. So, right now, we're going around to those three cities, looking for pre-assessment. If it goes over funding, we'll, we might have to grant it out, that's where the word grant came from. But I just wanted to let you know where we're at in the process and talking with others. And I think that's a great opportunity to work together, so, Dan, if you have any questions?
I'm not sure who you're talking about. I know the MS four.
Right.
And I understand what you're talking about, what you've done. But what are you saying, you would like to see the communities, what exactly to work with?
Basically, to be able to go out and see what are the options in the cities, as far as, in these other cities, as far as stormwater, to remove total phosphorus from the stormwater, which is required, the pollutant. And then, basically, it gives you as city council members, and them, as a planning, it gives maybe five, six different options, but it gives you as council members options to make decisions, which is what you need. I mean, instead of just someone walking up and saying, "Well, let's just do this." Well, it gives you many different options, based off land use, based off some of the stormwater issues, things along that line.
We just, I think just got done submitting our new plan to the public area. Is there anything within that that you see that this would apply?
I think, because you've done your assessment on that, you're probably pretty much ready, you know, you've met some of a lot of the requirements as far as Brainerd, I mean, you met the first steps. The key is, is that, and in talking with others, you know, first of all, an agency from the state will ask for information. Then the next step is, well, you gotta do a little bit of planning. Then after planning becomes implementation, and sometimes it's better to get ahead of that, because right now, there's grants available for stormwater implementation. If they make it a compliantery thing, let's say in the next two years, and I'm just thinking out loud here, but if it becomes compliantery, those grants will go away. So, the idea is, let's get this done, let's get all the MS four cities kind of working together, and then let's submit a grant application before there are no grant applications, and we'll be well ahead of the game.
Size of the grants that are, that you're thinking about, now the line?
The size of the grants for...
What you're talking about, that a city should submit or be part of, I mean?
Oh, sure. Those are actually depending on the city and what they chose to do, and things along that line. So, if you chose option A, and it was worth this, you know, physically this much, you could write that grant. Because it comes from the Legacy Amendment, which is our constitutional amendment, and that's really, I'm not gonna say limitless, but it's a very big pot of money that we didn't have before. And right now, stormwater is a really hot issue, as far as, it's really in vogue and the thing that, you know, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is talking about, Clean Water is really talking about, and I think, you know, now is the time to kind of move on those while there's opportunity. Not that there won't be opportunity in the future, but it's a really hot topic, so...
So, is there anything that we need to do now, or is this just basically informational only?
This was more informational, just to let you guys know what's going on.
Okay.
If I were going to some of those other MS four cities, I'd be saying, "Oh, and here's an opportunity. Can we talk with your city engineer?"
And so, somewhere down the line, you're going to try to gather the five cities together and try to brainstorm some type of an application for grants?
That would, that would be more, that might be more efficient, working as a group rather than as individuals. We're not quite sure, but you know, that's kind of where we're headed, so...
That was just an FYI for us.
It's really an FYI to let you guys know, you got...
I had a quick question. You had stated that, you know, we already did the first part, and then that the Mississippi Headwaters Board would be able to give us choice A, B, C, D. Have you given us any of those choices, or do we need to ask for those?
Well, you already, when you, when you did Buffalo Creek, and you had those, you had many different options. One was like rain gardens and things along that line, and others, I don't know if there was a pond in there or not, I'm not quite sure, but you had different options. Now, you've, you know, you've met that stormwater requirement, as far as you know what the BMP is, you have options, and you know the cost, and you know how much phosphorus it will remove. Now, it's up to you as a, as a city, you can either just sit on that information, and when the time comes, make that decision, or you can choose right now to make, you know, any, it's your decision, but you know, you're a little bit ahead of the game, and we're just trying to keep the other people involved and kind of excited on this, so, you know, you guys don't have to spend your money, and we can collectively, as a state, work on this issue.
Do you have like a newsletter or something that you could like update us quarterly or however often you do, just let us know how that process is going?
Sure, I can keep you guys up to dated with, you know, correspondence or things along that line, just kind of saying where we're at, things along that line, so, yeah, I could do that.
And I was just wondering, like, is this something that would go through Jeff, Hallsetter's office, our city engineer, and you would work in a close relationship with the city engineer in this? Is that where it would go?
Yeah, that's possible.
You know, that, you know, it's kind of different, because Soil and Water actually started this with you, which was really forthcoming on their part, and you know, I think you guys got a good product, and you know, definitely, as this goes forward, I'm in contact with the city engineers from other cities. So, you know, yeah, it starts at Public Works or engineers, and you know, it's an opportunity to expand from there. So, we'll see where we're at in a few months, and then we'll, you know, probably talk about it in November second to the legislature, we're having a meeting at that time to really explain what's going on in the upper Mississippi and things along that, so, keep people informed.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, next on the agenda is Colonel Saint Sauber, is that you, Sauber? And he's back here for, this has been an annual update, right, or has it been semi-annual?
It has, it has, Mr. Chair, so I appreciate you, appreciate you inviting me up. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Colonel Scott Saint Sauber from Camp Ripley.
Only being the changes is the faces on here.
Right, right, right. I'm starting my fourth year as a commander now, and we'll get my slides up here, and I wanted to give you an update on what we're doing down at Camp Ripley this year. And obviously, we're like everybody else, we're pretty glad that winter might be over and that we're moving forward now, so we should be starting to get a little louder, and you'll hear us once in a while, especially, we started getting busy last weekend. And I will tell you that, right now, our mission really hasn't changed, and as we get ready to go here, we have the units right now at Camp Ripley, if you hear the helicopters moving around Camp Ripley right now, especially at night, up around the borders, it's because the thirty-fourth Aviation Brigade is getting ready to deploy. So, even though it appears, you know, through all the things that the war is ending, and the wars are ending, we're still out there deploying soldiers worldwide, we still have units in Afghanistan. The thirty-fourth Aviation Brigade is currently training at Camp Ripley as they are getting ready to deploy to Kuwait to support all the operations in the Persian Gulf with their helicopters. So, I'll call this year pretty much a return to normal, okay, for what we remember as being normal down at camp. Our mission statement really hasn't changed, and forgive me, I usually don't have the screen behind me, but I'm gonna refer to that screen once in a while to make sure I'm on the right slide.
You can move the podium.
Oh, you know what, as long as you're okay with me moving around, I'll just probably move around where I'm at, and I'm gonna do that. Usually not behind a mic, but I know you guys are on TV and whatever, and you want my great-looking personality on there. Not really. Okay, our mission hasn't changed, okay, our mission has not changed. We're still deploying soldiers to theaters overseas and making sure that these kids are ready to go to war and protect our federal interests. That's our number one mission. Our secondary mission, obviously, is our state mission, and that's the mission that we're doing with the inter-agencies that you see down at Camp Ripley all the time, and that's protecting the property and citizenry of the state of Minnesota. When called upon by the governor, you know that that's what the National Guard does, and that's one of our primary missions. And then our third mission is always what I'm doing right now, our community mission. It's how can we go back and tell you what we're doing, how can we share our successes with you, what can we do for you as community members to stay strong and healthy and viable in our communities? So, that's really what I'm doing down there with all my staff. And most of you know Dan Bednark, Chief Bednark's with me tonight, and you know, and he's been a, he's my right-hand man when we come out to these things and handles a lot of stuff down at our Joint Visitors Bureau. So, if you need information from Camp Ripley, Dan obviously is a very good local source. Next slide, please. Our economic impacts, what people really are concerned about, you know, we are an economic driver in Morrison-Crowing and Cass County, and there's a couple of numbers that I watch that are pretty important to me every year, when I think about how viable are we and how viable will we be? And one of the numbers I look at is really, I look in here at the local contracts. I like this number to be about three million a year. This year, it's, last year it was a little bit lower than that, it was about two, two point three million. I'd like to see that up around three million, and I think that's where we'll be. And that's money that's coming directly to your communities, right? That's money that's being spent here, it's coming back to the communities, and so, it's an indicator for me to see how we're doing. Another thing that I watch very closely is project numbers. About twenty-three million dollars in projects right now at Camp Ripley, ongoing, that were started last year. We have been very, very fortunate over the last ten to twelve years in the infrastructure. If you've been down to camp, you've seen how much we've been building, and what we've been doing. And now, everyone knows that that budget cycle's starting to turn. When you come out of a war cycle, and obviously with sequestration, we're starting to see the federal dollar go down, but I can tell you that Camp Ripley is in very good, very good state. We're fully funded again this year, and it looks like our preliminary numbers next year are gonna be pretty similar. And actually, we're gonna have a busier summer next year than this year, so I didn't indicate one year of normal. Okay, next year, we're gonna be much busier, okay? So, actually, what I look at at the end of the day is, I want this number, you know, you figure money turns twice. If I'm around three hundred million in economic impact in a year, we are right where we need to be. That is an indicator that we use, and that's pretty standard. If you go back over our numbers, you'll see us somewhere between three hundred and four hundred million dollars a year in economic impact, so that's a, that's a good number for us at camp. Next slide. This is our training year, a look at our, at our training highlights this year. Now, as I mentioned, the helicopters are down at Camp Ripley right now, they'll be training the next couple of weeks, so they will be up on the northern boundaries of the installation, and they will be flying a lot at night. So, if you're down along the Street Seventy-One corridor, up on the Crowing River, you're gonna see the helicopters moving around at night, and here are moving around, because they are getting ready to deploy, so they are fully busy. Now, the second half of May, we're gonna have two armor units come in. So, remember I told you we're gonna get a little bit louder? And now, luckily for up here in Brainerd, those tanks shoot in the south. They generally, they don't come up here in the north end of camp and shoot, they stay down in the southern end of camp. But with the weather turning, now you get the night, the humidity changes, and of course, you'll hear us. You'll hear us making some noise down there. It's not Thunderstorm, it's us, okay? Next slide, but very low numbers, so you don't have to worry about that. June, June's a nice month for us this year, it's not as big as it normally is. I would call it very, very medium at best, but we've got a number of units that aren't necessarily noise makers, but they're gonna be doing a lot of different tasks. The engineers will be bridging the Mississippi a lot this year. So, if you're, if you're a fisherman on the Lower Mississippi, if you're down in the Fort Ripley area, we'll put schedules out when we're bridging across the river, and we never keep the river closed more than twenty-four hours. So, when we get the bridges up and across the river, and they do fast water bridge crossing, generally, it'll be about a twenty-four hour span, and then we'll open the bridge back up, you know, they'll take it out, so that traffic can move up and down the bridge. But we'll keep people informed when we're doing that, we have a lot of bridging operations this year. So, there's gonna be a lot of units that are bridging, small units that are using pontoon bridging on the Mississippi River, down where we're at. Now, we have a unit out of Missouri, gonna be up, and then our, and some MPs out of North Dakota. And then, of course, an armor, this armor unit is actual habitual customer of ours, they do all their training. They fly in during the training year, their tanks are kept at Camp Ripley, and their Bradley Fighting Vehicles, and they actually do all of their live-fire training at Camp Ripley, and they're from the state of Ohio. So, they're a very good partner of ours, and they're actually becoming part of our formation, so, out of the state of Ohio. Next slide. Second half of June, again, not a big month for us, five thousand's pretty normal for me. It's not bad at all, it's a pretty good indicator. We'll have a cavalry unit from Illinois, again, another bridging unit, an engineer company, another engineer battalion out of North Dakota, and then our own, our own units. Now, here, this one you'll notice, in the second half of June, one of the one-two-five field artillery is coming up, and they definitely will be shooting up in the north Hendrickson, into the north impact area, which is Leach. So, you'll hear them at night, you'll see their lights in the sky when they're, when they're shooting their illumination rounds and doing their training, but they definitely will be up in the north half of Camp Ripley. Next slide. Now, something we haven't done ever is had a Norwegian exchange in the summer. And this summer in June, we'll be receiving about a hundred Norwegian soldiers, and they'll be, they'll be at Camp Ripley from June seventeenth till July second. It's the first time in forty-one years that we've done a summer exchange. Now, their soldiers will come over to Minnesota, and then one of the reasons that the generals from Norway and from Minnesota, General Nash, decided to do this exercise, was that they wanted to get a better oper, they wanted to get a better look at our domestic operations capabilities. So, there, normally, you know, if you remember the Norwegian exchange, we bring a lot of their Norwegian youth that have just conscripted into their services, and that's normally about two-thirds of their unit, and then about a third of the unit would be professional soldiers. This year, we're gonna reverse that. About two-thirds of that will be professional soldiers, and a third will be youth or new conscripts. And the reason we're doing that is because we're obviously inwardly focused on our domestic capabilities. We're moving into an exercise in fifteen called Vigilant Guard, which is a Homeland Defense domestic operation for the Minnesota Guard, and they and Norway, obviously, are responding to the events that they had in their country a year ago, and the Home Guard, obviously, is domestically focused on the, on the safety of their own country. So, we can bring all of our resources to bear in professional training in that time period, if we go in the summertime, as opposed to the winter. So, that's what we're gonna do. Now, at the same time, our hundred soldiers from the Minnesota Guard are gonna go a thousand miles north of the Arctic Circle, because we wanted to enjoy summer in Norway. So, they're gonna go all the way up to Finnmark, and they'll be way up here at a camp called Camp Porshenmon, and they're gonna be involved, it's the northernmost NATO base in the world, and they're gonna go up there and do a couple of weeks of training, and it should be a great training experience for them, because they're actually going to do riverine operations, they're gonna be working off of a NATO base with the Norwegian Home Guard, so it should be a tremendous experience for them. And dealing with, and they'll be up in Finnmark, so if you know anything about the northern part of Norway, this is Lapland, this is, this is all, this is where all the native people are, the indigenous people up there, and they'll actually be up there, and when they go on their, what we call Buddy Weekend, or they go out with the community, communities and culture, most of that will be in reindeer farms and amongst the herders and the native gatherers up there, so it should be quite an experience for our soldiers. Now, six months after this, or eight months, in February, we're gonna do this again, and they're gonna come back into a winter cycle, so they'll be back in February of twenty fifteen. And then, we'll go back to a winter rotation for three, four years, and then back to a summer rotation. That's kind of the new model that we're gonna try to work out this year. Next slide. In July, again, very, very low numbers in July, it should be a very easy month for us. Again, an engineer unit out of the state of Michigan, and then a couple of our cabs, our combined armed battalions, and that's tanks and Bradleys, but they're also fielding and gonna be live firing, most of that'll be down in the southern part of camp, but you will hear us, but very low numbers, and they'll be on the ranges for the most part. Next slide. August, August is a big month, and it's gonna be a fairly busy month for us, because you're gonna have a couple of things that are, that are noise-making, or we'll have, you got an artillery unit right here, the one-five-one, our western unit out of Minnesota, out of Montevideo, and then right here are the rockets from South Dakota. A lot of you remember the last time the rockets were here. The rockets will come in from the South Dakota National Guard, and they will sit down, and that's these guys down here. And some of you probably remember when they fired, or may have been out of camp, when they shoot. They only shoot for a couple of days, we'll let the community know when they shoot. They don't shoot a live round, they shoot what's called a reduced-range practice rocket, but they sit way down in the south end of camp, and for those of you that remember the size of camp, you know, we're about eighteen miles long, and then they're gonna shoot up into the northern impact area, because that's their minimum range. So, what you'll see if you're by Camp Ripley, or if you're along the boundaries, or you'll see a white smoke trail, okay, and they break the sound barrier twice, okay? When the rocket leaves the launcher, it breaks the sound barrier and gives a pretty good boom, and then, seven seconds before they land, they break the sound barrier. And then seven seconds before they land, they break the sound barrier when they slow down. So, and so you'll notice those audible booms, and we'll let the communities know when those two days are. They don't shoot a whole lot of ordinance, but they are quite interesting when you have to be driving by, and all these white rocket trails are going through the sky. People will call us and go, "What are you guys doing?" So that's what we're doing, okay? We also have some engineering units, and again, really, other than those two units, not a lot of noise-making going on. Next slide. September, we'll wrap up our training year, and as I indicated, very light year again, and this will be the last time we breach the Mississippi. That's a pretty good shot of us when we go over and we actually bridge across the Mississippi. That's quite an operation. If you're an engineer, or you're interested in engineering, and you wanna come out and see that, please give us a call. But Dan, no, it's quite a deal when they do this. They'll do this under day-and-night conditions. The bridge boats, obviously, push against those bridges and hold them in place, and we're one of only two fast-water bridge sites where they can do this training. And our piece of the Mississippi River is just fantastic for it. It just absolutely works perfectly. It's the right depth, it's the right speed, and everything works well right there for our bridging operations. And it's actually at an old bridge site that used to exist back in 1800s, so it's actually historical as well. Now, I said 14 was gonna be a normal year. I'll just let you know that '15 is going to be a much busier year. Do you remember a couple of years ago when we had these exportable combat training packages come in, and we had very, very large numbers of contractors and soldiers in the area for months? We have two of those scheduled in '15, back-to-back. So from about March, end of March until about mid-August, you can expect us to be very, very busy in '15. Now, a lot of that contractor traffic, we'll push to the local communities because we just, we simply can't, we can't handle that kind of traffic, and they're gonna be living here for three, four months. So for those of you that are in the hotel-restaurant business, you'll know what I was talking about because a couple of years ago, we pushed a lot of that to the communities, and that's gonna happen again, and we'll keep in touch with everybody so they're aware of when that planning... We've started the planning process already. One brigade is our own brigade, and that's about 4,500 soldiers. That's our brigade combat team out of the Minnesota Guard. The second unit is out of Nebraska, and it's called a Battlefield Surveillance Brigade. It's about 3,000 soldiers, and they're here for an extended period of time. Next slide. Civilian usage has been great for us. You know, I used to tell everybody out there that we used to be about 70% military and about 30% civilian. I would say we're almost 60/40 now, and we're getting, so we extended our training year from that normal annual training of three months. Now, our training cycle really starts about mid-February, and it goes through the mid-November. That's really kind of the way our training cycle looks now, and it's because of our civilian usage and partners. If you look at some of our civilian partners up there, you'll see what I mean, and that is like the State Patrol Academy, what's going on right now. The numbers aren't as high, but they're here over a period of three to four months, and they're here every week, you know, and then they go home on weekends and come back. The Department of Corrections is becoming a very big interagency partner for me. They're up here a lot. The Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, they're using our Combined Arms Collective Training Facility. They bring up all of their guards. DNR's going through in-service right now. State Patrol's going through in-service. So one of the things I always tell everybody when the State Patrol's going through six weeks of in-service is you might wanna slow down on 371 because they're coming on, on and off camp, and are all rotating, they're all rotating through camp, okay? All of the State Patrol. So a lot of people find out the hard way this time of year that that stretch of road's not the best one to be running up and down pretty fast. We've got a lot of events coming up, but again, some of the things I love to do, last year, we held the Gold Star Mothers Conference, first time ever, and that was probably one of the most touching events I've been involved in because, obviously, that's the families of fallen soldiers. And they come to camp and do their conference at Camp Ripley. So they'll do that again this year, and it's just a fantastic event, and I'm very, very glad that we can reach out to those families. State Farm Marshals do a number of events. The Morrison County Water Festival brings sixth graders in from all over Morrison County, and they learn about water. Interestingly enough, the Mississippi Headwaters guy was here, and that's part of that process is we're very, obviously, that 18 miles of the Mississippi River is pretty important to us. And so we bring all those sixth graders in. We talk about the importance of water quality and what we're doing at Camp Ripley and how we do it. My DAV turkey hunt actually is this week, so our hunts are going on. We'll have our fishing event coming up in June, so all of those activities on the civilian side will be ongoing. Next slide. Medical Simulation Training Center. This is one of our newest ranges, and I brought it up just because I want you to know we're building this site. This site is one of only two that currently exists in the National Guard. It's gonna be the third one now. And this one will allow us to train our medics, our combat lifesavers, and we'll be opening this up to our interagency partners as well for EMTs, for life and medical support people, to be able to put them under some really difficult stress in dealing with severe traumatic injury. And we put it, now, if you think about it in the context of the military and what kind of trauma that we have to train for, and our medical personnel have to train for in that magic hour to keep somebody alive, this will simulate it perfectly. These mannequins do everything the human body do. This facility mimics combat directly and in all situations directly. So we intend to, obviously, use this for the, for training our medics to preserve life, but we also will spread this out and bring in all of our local law enforcement who wanna participate and start to do some interagency activities, allowing them to experience that kind of trauma in a setting that we can monitor and evolve. So this is a great thing for Camp Ripley and for the state of Minnesota. Next slide. Our Education Center. A lot of you know it's going up right now. It is, it will be done somewhere in the area in March of 2015. Again, for me, it's gonna, we're gonna move our Regional Training Institute into here where we train our soldiers. It's also going to, this was a $20 million state bond. It'll increase our classroom facilities for 200 students. But the biggest thing for me is it's gonna give me a 400-seat dining facility, and that, for me, is absolutely something that I was missing at Camp Ripley. You know, if you think about Camp Ripley, we have about the same amount of infrastructure as a town of about 5,000, right? And as the mayor of that town, and the mayor knows I'm talking about, I have all of the problems that a normal town has when we surge for... No, I don't have much crime. I don't. I don't have a whole lot of crime, and when I do, it's pretty short-lived. But other than that, I have a lot of the same problems. And one of the problems I have is that, you know, we have to feed about, we have to have the capacity to feed soldiers and civilians when they're in training. This facility will allow me to feed 400 and out. So that's the kind of facility that was needed for us. And this conference center will allow me to enter the state's soft services, okay? So those areas that don't need weapons training, they don't have to be out in the field, but they need an area to conference. They need, the state needs an area to bring their MINDOT, the Minnesota Management Budget, to the local conferences outside the cities. This will allow us to do that, and it'll also allow us to work with our military partners. So we're very excited about this facility coming online. Next slide. Our partners, a lot of great partners. Everybody knows Minnesota DNR Conservation Center is headquartered on Camp Ripley, has been and will be. And so we are working with them, those folks, all the time. Their academy is coming up. Minnesota State Patrol, as I mentioned, their academy is there, and they're doing in-service right now. Homeland Security has full-time personnel on Camp Ripley now, out of the Emergency Management Training Center, and they, we work with HSCM every day, and so they're doing a lot of their multi-agency event planning on Camp Ripley as well. And MINDOT is actually doing more and more all the time, and I suspect, you know, a lot of you see their snowplows in the fall, in September. They do all the snowplow training for the state of Minnesota at Camp Ripley, and they do that in the month of September, and this year, they'll have two classes. And, you know, as a naive Minnesotan, I thought that that was a job, you know, you went out and were a snowplow driver. But I came to realize that after many years that that's an additional duty. And if you happen to be in valet, and, you know, and you're the clerk, and it snows, you get to drive the snowplow, and everybody else does. So I thought that was quite interesting, and they told me they were gonna, you know, do this training at Camp Ripley. You know, I was like, "Okay, in September, that's good, that's great." And they did everything I thought they would. They ran over the fences, they knocked down the walls. They even hit the front gate one time. But what I saw was a tremendous transformation over the period of time that they got in these big trucks and ran these plows. And then you saw them up, driving up and down 371, even at that time, and then it really dawned on me in the wintertime when you see them four-breast going down the road, right? And you have your family with you. What a great value to the citizens of Minnesota to train those guys how to run that big equipment. I mean, as a citizen, I feel pretty confident about that when I'm out on the highway, especially a winter this long. So a great opportunity in MINDOT. We'd like to do more with MINDOT all the time. Next slide. Our environmental programs. Everybody is aware of our environmental programs, what we're doing. We just won, our environmental team just won the Army Environmental Quality Award for the Department of Defense. So, I mean, they just, they hit another home run. I couldn't do my job without these guys. This team of compliance environmentalists and natural and resource management environmentalists allow me to do my job. They monitor our resources. They monitor our flora and fauna. They do all of these surveys. And then we are, of course, big right now into green energy production. You may have heard, we're doing a lot of things right now. We have two, we have two geothermal fields going in. We have a vertical field. We're doing two horizontals. Large, the Education Center will be geothermal heated. That'll be a horizontal geothermal field, a very large facility. Our tech, our Training Community Center is getting a geothermal field. We're looking right now at a 100-acre solar voltaic field, so 100-acre solar panels field to produce power for us. We're working right now and looking at the capability of biomass with our wood production and the amount of mature forest that we have and the ability to rotate our forest and use that biomass to create energy. So if you're interested in the green energy technologies, I absolutely would ask you to come down and see Marty Scoglan. A lot of you guys know Marty. He's been our senior environmentalist down there for a long time, and talk to him about all the things we're doing in green energy. And we also, we have wind generators out right now, testing wind, but I do not believe that's gonna be successful where we're at. We just don't have the sustained winds to do great wind generation, but it certainly looks good for our solar and some of the other, especially biomass. Biomass is very exciting for us right now. Next slide. Our environmental quality, obviously, I mentioned it already. We are 100% compliant in all of our federal, state, and local. We work very closely, and we're very highly monitored. So we have many wells drilled all over. We test water quality consistently and constantly, and we're required to report under many circumstances, which we do, which I'm very proud of the team to be able to allow us to train to the standards we need to train to. Next slide. Our partnerships and outreach. Again, I can't say enough about our partners. DNR, the Board Bowser is huge for me. Soil and Water Resources is great for me there all the time. They do a lot with me. The Nature Conservancy is an interesting one. A lot of people, you know, I come from the old army. I thought there was a time, I never thought there'd be a time that we would speak with the Nature Conservancy and the Audubon Society and the Army synonymously. Okay, I just didn't think they were compatible, all right? But what I've learned over the years is they're very much compatible. In fact, in my training site, we've had the opportunity to open up to the Audubon Society for a lot of multi-species bird watching and collection of data, which has been fantastic. Our work with the Minnesota Colleges and Universities is ongoing, and we bring interns in every year. In fact, if you, right now, we're bringing interns in to go out and collect ticks, which is always a fun one when you see them in their white suits running around collecting ticks to get sent in. Not my favorite, but they do it, and it's important, obviously, because we're doing the research and saying a lot of stuff online, diseases, and things like that. So a lot of tours for us, a lot of ecotourism's becoming big for us. We're starting to get some groups coming in. They wanna go out and see the training areas and look at the opportunities for ecotourism and some of the biodiversity that we have on camp. So that's been pretty exciting. Our hunts, obviously, the turkey hunts right now, believe me, we do have a few turkeys, and so they'll be out there doing that. And then, of course, our events that deal with the community, certainly with disabled veterans. Next slide. Our prescribed burns. Good news, we're done with Leach. We did it a couple of weeks ago. You may not even have noticed. So, but Leach is burned off, and if you were by camp today, we're burning Hendrickson. So today, if you were up 371, you saw a huge smoke cloud down south because we're burning today. Get those prescribed burns down. We burn about 13,000 to 14,000 acres, and that'll be burned off either in hazard reduction or mission enhancement. Believe it or not, we do a lot of mission enhancement burns because we have some very good native landscapes at camp. So we actually harvest a lot of native grass seed. A lot of big blue stem is harvested, and we actually sell that on the market. So a lot of people don't realize we have that kind of capability down there, and we do. An Indian paintbrush is another one. So it's some native species that by burning and enhancement and hazard reduction that we can manage, and it helps me because my job is live-fire training, and live-fire training starts fires. And the biggest concern as a commander, people ask me all the time, "What's my largest concern?" It's a fire off the installation. That's my largest concern every day, day or night. I have to be concerned about the community around me. And I will tell you, last year, for the first time ever, we had a fire burn onto Camp Ripley and very close to where we had about 600 or 700 soldiers built it. So we learned a lot in that fire when we helped the local communities, is on the very southwestern part of the camp, but it actually started off the camp and burned onto the post. So we learned a lot, and we have a very, very good fire department, a very good team, and we love working with the communities, so we're out there working with communities all the time. Next slide. Our ACUB program, the Army Compatible Use Program is going strong. Actually, I have a meeting next year, the, next week. The Department of Defense is coming in with a team. They're actually looking at using us for a model for a new program because we've been so successful with our partners and with our landowners that are willing to participate in conservation easements. So very exciting. We'll be meeting with them next week. We've been very well supported by the federal government and, of course, by the Lissard Outdoor Heritage Council, and again, this year, we've already received money in a down cycle from the Army to support ACUB, which was a pretty, pretty big deal for us. So we're very excited to continue this. We're actually, the work this year we're doing is up in the Gulf River area, so we're working up here on the north end, doing some conservation easements up in this corner. Next slide. Other than that, we're just trying to be a good neighbor. So we appreciate the support. If there's anything you need at any time, please feel free to call me or any of my staff. We're more than welcome to come up to ask any issues or questions, and I brought it, there's a survey that you will leave here, and if you would, please fill that out for us. That is the way we gauge the response from our communities. We give that to all of our customers as well, and I'll take your questions and then get out of your hair.
I just have one question. That'd be on the zebra mussels. I didn't see that up there, but I know you're a good land steward. How do you deal with the zebra mussels when you're dealing with the river and your boats, and then you transfer your equipment to other lakes? I mean, and I didn't hear anything on...
Interesting, interesting. Now, we have not had a zebra mussel problem interior to the camp, so we have not identified the zebra mussel, to my knowledge, inside the lakes on the camp. Now, obviously, what might exist in the river, and what I will tell you is about our, our Army equipment is washed before it leaves the base. So it comes in and out of the water, if it's using the river, everything is clean before it leaves the installation. But I am gonna follow up with that because I need to talk to the guys because we have had very little question and/or interest in, you know, on the zebra mussel on Camp Ripley. Our lakes are very, very small.
Yeah, and I'm on the Mississippi, and I've got pictures that I could show you, the clusters that are on my equipment from the Mississippi side. And we've got a problem, and I was wondering if the Army was dealing with the same problem.
I have not seen it, but I am gonna ask, okay, and I'll get back to you because...
Anything you can help us with. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned, Colonel, a couple of different things about some engineering groups that were doing bridging projects and stuff. Ironically, we could use one.
What are you bridging?
A river. We lost our snowmobile bridge. Do you ever do any projects off-base?
Thank you for asking that question. Yes, yes, we do. It's a fairly long process, but what you can, what I can do is get you the points of contact because what we do is we take the project in its entirety in, and then we will take it to the, we have to take it and submit it to the Army, and then they will look at units that are compatible to that type of construction. And then if it fits, and in many cases, it could be a unit from somewhere else in the United States, and if it's picked up and seen as a valid project, they'll turn that around, and then they'll send a unit that will try, that has that skill, and that can actually be done. Now, it's not overnight process. It's a very time-intensive process for application, but it is possible. And you're probably looking, and I'm just guessing here, okay, so I'm thinking that you'd need about a year, 18-month, two-year timeline to take it, put it into a training cycle, and get units that would be willing, if it's the kind of bridging that they do. And it has to fit inside their mission scope. So, but yes, it is possible. And so if you're interested in it, we can certainly get you that information.
And we would contact you or just...
Yep, absolutely. Just get ahold of us, Donna Cater, or ahold of me, get ahold of Camp Ripley. We'll get you in touch with the engineering units, our construction facilities management office, and they will get you the right information that you need to apply and what those restrictions would be. And I'm sure what they'd probably do at first is look at the scope. What is the scope? Because the hardest part about, the hardest part about using our assets, our military assets, it has to fit the soldiers' training needs. And so it has to be very similar to what they would do in a normal cycle, and remember, they do annual training for two weeks. So sometimes, to do a project that takes longer than that, they have to come in with multiple units, so they have to be backed up now. The most recent project I can tell you we did was up at Red Lake. We built, our vertical team built some housing up at Red Lake. So that's the most recent project the Minnesota Guard is doing. So, but we certainly can look at it. Anything else?
Thank you. Any other questions?
You're very welcome. I wish you all the best, and thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Colonel. Okay, now, we're on to Personnel and Finance. Okay, now we're on to personnel and finance. Mr. Beavens. Can't remember what we're doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number one has been dispensed with. Item number two, the Fire Advisory Board update from the April thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen meeting. We've got a couple of motions regarding, regarding this. The first is, I gotta find the list of, of what the equipment purchase recommendations are. The first, thank you. The first motion on this item is to approve the Fire Advisory Board's recommendation and accept or recommend the use of eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Fire Capital Fund in ISO mode.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is a memo that just came out that we didn't have, so this is what I was looking for. That dot itemizes what, what the Fire Advisory Board is recommending. And I, and I want to make sure that you understand that the Fire Advisory Board, which includes our partners, it's not just a brainer thing. Have all signed off on this and agree that this is a well-used document.
Is that this?
No, it's, it's, one is, there's memo on it.
That's so much tonight. It's, I'm not sure where it is.
I came in.
How many dollars is in this question? How many dollars are in this fund? How many dollars are in this fund?
How many dollars in the fund total or how many of the expenditure?
Well, the expenditure is eighteen if we're doing, how many dollars do we have in this fund to take the eighteen from?
Yeah, I think the chief's got.
There's roughly two hundred and forty thousand right now.
And this is budgeted.
Two hundred and twenty-four, he says.
Thank you.
And it might be advisable that every year that fund, in a sense, grows because we get added to that.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second item on this is we've had a request from one of our current partners, and unfortunately, it's one of the partners that's leaving us, Fort Ripley, to basically accept their twelve-month leave from the partnership as of November. As opposed, November, if you recall, they submitted a request in November of two thousand and thirteen that they were no longer going to participate in our Fire Advisory Board. And, and at that time, they requested a significant reduction in the twelve-month notification process, of which we denied. And they said, well, okay, can we, can we take twelve months from November of two thousand and thirteen, basically cutting off the last month, which would be December of two thousand and fourteen, of their contract? Dollars and cents, this cost the board about two thousand dollars for the one month. And the motion on the personnel and finances to accept with regret that recommendation and to notify Fort Ripley that we have appreciated their participation and we would welcome them back in ISO mode.
Any other discussion? I want to add one too, David. Sorry to be honest. I hope this ends. Okay, hearing no other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion, carry.
Thank you. I have two FYI items and they're not directly related to the Fire Advisory Board, but they seem to have stemmed from, the Fire Department is a good example to use on FYIs on our standard reporting, financial reporting procedures to the council. And you just heard Chief Stunek and Finance Director Hillman mention that there's a, there's a sizable amount of money in the capital improve, uh, equipment fund for the Fire Department, but that, but that's a different type of purchase than maybe what we're normally used to. Meaning, we don't run out and buy fire trucks every, every three years, hopefully, because they're kind of expensive, but they're kind of expensive. And we might need a little different budgeting or ability to see the future and our needs as they arise. Maybe it's not five years, maybe it's ten years or even twenty years down the road. This will come up at the very next agenda item with the heating and ventilation here at City Hall. The minute that was purchased twenty years ago, it started deteriorating and depreciating. And some businesses will actually set aside money to replace it. And here it comes up as an agenda item in two thousand and thirteen at the point where it's really well beyond, it's usable purpose. There's really nothing left of it. You saw we've got duct tape in there, you know, I don't know what else is holding the thing together. But we've had to have employees come in over the weekend to make sure the building doesn't freeze. There's all kinds of issues and it kind of seems like, how could we not know this? And, and while we maybe do a acceptable job on the short term, five-year capital improvement plans, we've asked and are working with staff to try and come up with some sort of, maybe a more usable, long-term plan to complement the short term. So we can, so we can look at these things, say, how are we going to pay for them? They're expensive. Things like, things like fire trucks that you don't buy all the time, heating and ventilation systems that are hundreds of thousands of dollars. But you still need to, you still need to maintain and eventually replace them. So we're going to try and avoid, or at least try and help foresee the future a little bit if we can by looking at this. And this is not something I would expect to report back to you with a beautiful report in the next council meeting. This will take some time, but it's just something that I mentioned because it's applicable to the item number two and three. Secondly, quarterly budget to actual reports. And again, I'm using the Fire Department. You all received this, sort of been sitting on your desk. Normally, we don't do budget to actual until closer to the end of the year. This has come up that we've got a circumstances where now a quarter of the way through the year, through March, we've got some budget discrepancies or differences particularly noticeable in the center column, the paid-on call. Down at the bottom right where it's got the twenty-three oh one one in parentheses, that's, that's over budget. The parentheses is not negative, not ahead, we're, we're, we're over budget by that. And it's specifically related to the number of fire calls we've had. I mean, it's not that we've been spending money like crazy. We're, this is our job to go out and fires and it costs money to do that. And paid-on call guys are who fight the fires. It's much easier to budget for the, for the fire equipment operators because they, they work a more consistent schedule. These guys work based on fires. So we've had fires, we pay more, and we have a budget where we're off-budget. Now, conversely, in the full-time Fire Department, we've got a nine thousand dollars where we're ahead of the game. So the point of the matter is, is it would be nice if the council would know this for at least all the working funds on a quarterly basis. We're not going to do analyzation of paperbacks, but at least we could kind of say, where are we at, at quarter one, quarter two, quarter three? And this is likely something that you'll see probably at the June thirtieth budget report. So it's again, not something you can look for in your council packet in two weeks. But I wanted to mention it because here's a prime example of where that could be, potentially could be of use. I don't know in this particular instance if there's anything we knew about it, quit lighting stuff on fire. But I don't know that that's something the council could do.
Mr. Beavens, could I ask him a question because he's got a lot more here? Looking at this particular sheet, looking at the final left hand or right hand bottom figure of thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars deficit, does that represent the total deficit for this time period? And I'm guessing that would be the, the overage in the paid, or the full-time and the minus in the paid-on call and the difference would be the thirteen thousand. Is that correct?
That's my, that's my understanding.
So we are almost fourteen thousand dollars in deficit right now in the Fire Department.
What that is, is it's the actual through March and then we're estimating for April through December to get you an idea. It's not saying that we're going to be over budget or under budget. That's our best guess at this point in time where we think we're going to end up for the year.
Okay, so through this particular time period?
Nope, the whole year. We're looking at the whole year.
Okay, so we are not, where are we in this particular time period?
We didn't break it down, we didn't break the budget down by quarters. We looked at it at a whole year period.
We will need to see it by quarter to know because it's a little difficult to look for the whole year and say that's based on the quarter. And so unless we know where we are in the quarter, I'm not clear how you came to this conclusion. So, and that just, I would just like, I'll do it tonight, but I would like some explanation because I understand it's a projection. But it's obviously a projection based on the quarter.
We'd be happy to provide that for you.
Thank you. It's all I'm asking.
I have one question for Mr. Beavens. Mr. Beavens says if there's fires, you're going to have a deficit. Don't you budget for fires if you have firefighters?
We do, and that's based upon an average of what we've seen in the last several years. What we're saying is that the first three months, we saw more fires, more expense than we have in preceding first quarters in the last several years.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope you'll see the benefit in what we're trying to do to always give us more information. And again, it wasn't necessarily to pick on the Fire, pick on the Fire Department. Item number three is the capital improvement project follow-up. Just to bring you up to speed, as you recall, we've got six capital improvement items that were scheduled to be bonded for, that were, the bonding was at request of a petition of citizens, was stopped last fall. And we have not addressed the situation of what to do with the projects. And we're going to hopefully do so this evening. Roughly, just to, just to bring you up to speed, it was the City Hall Heating and Ventilation, the Police Fire Department Heating and Ventilation, the entrance of City Hall, Emergency Preparedness Generator, some telecommunication items, and the salt and sand storage building over at the Street and Sewer Department. Roughly a nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I say roughly, it's probably going to be that much or slightly more by the time we get actual estimates. But the question is, what are we going to do? Are we going to, we can bury our heads in the sand and not do anything. Can we do part of it? Can we pay for part of it? There are a couple of options that we looked at as far as how to pay for these. We could try and either add to the budget nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars in two thousand and fifteen, or reduce other expenditures by some amount. There, we can do other financing options, which could be as wide and varied as your imagination. Item three would be to place on the ballot for the November fourth referendum. That's kind of what the petition requested us to do. And of course, we could reintroduce the bonds anytime after one year, which would be December third, I think, roughly. First week of December is when the petition came in halting the bonding process. So personnel and finance would recommend that we place the six items as you, as they are presented on the ballot for the two thousand and fourteen general election in ISO mode.
Second.
Other discussion? Great decision. Thank you so much for that. I'll support it for more.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to, just a little bit more detail if I might, and I will try not to get lengthy, but a couple of things that came up that we talked about. We've got some funds that have positive balances in them, some of them sizable. And we talked about, well, what, what could we do? Could we take some money out of some of these funds and reduce, and reduce the, and reduce the amount we bond for? And I want to share with you right now, we absolutely could. We absolutely could. The fund that was mentioned in one of the petitioner's letters was the, was either the Capital Projects Fund, which is four hundred, or the Construction Fund, which is four oh one. And I want to just explain the two things. Right now, the Construction Fund, four oh one, has a seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollar extremely large balance in it. That would pay for the HVAC right there. But I want to explain what that fund is used for. So you, so you know what, what the consequences are of using that money or what it's not intended for. That's the money we use to pay for road projects prior to when we bond to reimburse the fund. So as the construction bills come in, those contractors are expecting payment. And we pay them. And then we bond in the fall and we generally do all our bonding at one time. The primary reason we bond, you can bond multiple times during the year, but each time you bond, it costs you more money because there's all kinds of costs associated with letting a bond. So if we do it all at once, it saves us money. So what we do is we have a construction fund, which we basically, we've run it down hundreds of thousands of dollars in the red before. And right now, it's a sizable amount and we certainly can use it. It is an option. Another option we talked about is we can pare down the list. We could say, you know, what's prioritized? What's the most important? The issue being is, if we're going to go to referendum, I don't know if we want to go to referendum year after year after year after year, or election after election after election. If we've got this, this list as a definitive needs that we've let go for a length of time, then it would be best to go at one time. Certainly, one of the drawbacks is we, you know, we might come up short on the referendum. But I think if we all do a good job and explain the needs of these projects, then we have some chance of success. And better to do it one time than, or six times. And lastly, we talked about, it's critical, we're probably, we're not probably, we're going to have to, these are all based on engineering estimates. And we've reconsidered with the engineers, expectations are, they're probably fairly accurate, if not even a little behind because it's now been six months. When I say behind, I mean, maybe, maybe prices have gone up a little bit. But we'll certainly need long before we go to referendum, which is August twenty.
Well, it has to be, the council has approval by August twenty-second.
We have to approve, yeah, we have to approve it and have all the language for the, for the question, as well as the dollars and cents squared on it by August twenty-second, which is the other reason why this evening's vote becomes critical, because there is time involved. So I apologize for the lengthy operation, explanation, but it's important that you all understand why we made the decision what we did and why we didn't carelessly disregard some of the other options. But we felt with the time consideration and with the necessity in the projects, this is the one that best served the citizens' benefit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Did you have something?
I think I actually understood a lot of it.
Okay.
We'll make a P and F guy out of you. You're going to have to stay awake though, because we will belong.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah, motion, yes.
Okay.
And a second and the mayor.
I'd like to make a, a statement, really. And, and, and looking and listening to, and, and in reality, what should have happened or could have, would have happened if we had not had a petition signed. It didn't really save our taxpayers any money, but in reality, has put the city into a bind as to how we're going to accomplish these things that in reality need to be accomplished. And for that, I want to just make that as a statement. And for those that were a part of that, I say it in all honesty, they didn't do a city favors. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm hoping we can continue to have discussions. I think going to referendum is fine. But I think in the meantime, there are things we could do as a council, and that is to set our priorities. I've made this statement before, if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. That's a simple statement of fact. And I do believe that we have money, that we have put in our budget. I can think of forty-nine thousand dollars right off the top of my head that could be spent on any one of these projects. It would cover emergency preparedness. We go away towards some of the others. I think that's a frustration perhaps that some of the people who signed the petition had, and I'm one of them. And that is my utter frustration. And I say that as on the inside. I sit on this council. I read the information. I study the budget. In my view, there is money in this budget that should not be in the places it is. The council decided it should be. That's the council's prerogative. But the people should be the master and not the servant. The council should be the servant. And the people looked at this. And they looked at the budget, at least I think many of them did. And they felt also, we did not need to put in the budget some of the things that are in there. And I don't believe it will pass. I do believe the people were done a great service by a lot, well, we had no choice but to allow them to do this. I think they did us a great service. I can only hope that we then, as a council, instead of moping and whining and complaining about these terrible people holding us back, respect their. holding us back, respect their decision and take seriously the message they have sent. And that message is, take a look at your budget and see what you did not need to have in there. I don't suggest there was anything in there that was evil, or bad, or nasty. But there were things in there that if you were spending your own money, unless it's unlimited, you probably wouldn't be spending. So I have to respectfully disagree with the mayor, whom I greatly respect and actually love. But I think the people have every right to stand up and say, we want a voice and we want answers. And I think the council should have some special meetings just for that purpose, for budget purposes only.
And, and one of the things, um, when we meet in, in June, um, or July, to talk about our, our plans, that, that definitely is something that we need to put forward, and, and, uh, Mr. Russo indicated that, um, sooner than later, we're gonna start the budgeting process, and so that would be.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
I had, and I had asked this question in committee, and I think Mary was there, and I, I know she was there. But what, my question to the committee and to her was, in the last twenty or thirty years, why we didn't put twenty to thirty thousand away for this each year? And I remember Mary you saying, because you don't trust staff with the money.
I don't trust the council with the money. Every time we have a few cents ahead, it's spent. Someone comes up here and makes a pitch, they want it. It's a great thing. The question is, is it something I should reach into the taxpayers' money and pay for? I know, you can set it aside, it will not be there. I guarantee it.
And that's why we have the lump sum.
I guarantee.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I, well, you know, and part of the conversation was, and I'll, I'll reiterate, um, when we do have a surplus somewhere else, uh, yes, it's oftentimes looked at to say, we have a surplus, let's, let's move it towards, um, you know, improving something like this. However, no different, you're, you're, you're stealing from Peter to pay Paul when you do that because those, those projects were budgeted, the capital projects were budgeted, yes, there's a surplus in there right now. But if you move it towards the, the repairs or whatever, you know, that's, that's currently on this right now, you're left with no money in there, that account, so when it's needed, uh, you, you know, then, then what do you do? You gotta find another, you know, so I don't understand, I don't understand the reason, the reasoning, I guess, in, in what you're saying. Um, you know, because we should've been budgeting, we, we should've been budgeting a long time ago. And, uh, uh, you know, I, I'm a big advocate for putting it back on, and, you know, for the city, uh, for the people to understand that. But if I were to just look at this and not know that those were budgeted for certain reasons, I would, without any knowledge, say, why don't you just use it out of that account? But when you do have the knowledge as to why that money was put there, you then tend not to wanna use it out of that specific account. So, I, I'm, I'm for put, putting it back on, you know, letting the people vote, but, you know, there's a, there's a reason we budget, and there's a reason we need to stick, like, not just keep borrowing just because it's a surplus, you know, here, there, and everywhere, so.
Thank you. And, and, you know, we really didn't have a five-year plan until we had, had the, the, the plan and process that we had last year. And so we're starting that process, and I think the question is, and it, and it was brought up by Mr. Bevins, is that we need to look at, um, capital projects, whether it be, uh, a furnace or heating HVAC system, or whether it's, it's a tractor for, for parks and rec, or a truck, or whatever. We, we need to act like a business as much as we can, although government's not a business. But we at least need to acknowledge that and, and, and try to plan. So, you know, I think, I think we've beaten this subject down enough right now, and there was a, a first and a second to put this on the.
Is there a resolution and need to?
We're, we're asking for directions received so that we upgrade the resolution.
Yeah. So, so everybody who is in favor of putting this on, or, or directing staff to put a resolution together, um, for the November fourth election, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number four is the, uh, um, is that Minnesota City's insurance trust?
Yes, it is.
All right. Well, we did receive, as you recall, uh, we made a, we made a deal with our, uh, uh, partners with Baja regarding the insurance, uh, settlement received, uh, or expected to be received from, um, from damage due to birds on the Civic Center roof. And I think, uh, that was, is it like forty thousand or something like that? Where's that part that, that, yeah?
My estimate was eighty-two, second one.
Not, I don't know what the estimate is, I want the dollars and cents.
Forty.
Forty thousand dollars as a compromise settlement, would that be less than five grand? No, that's, after subtracting our deductible of five thousand dollars, the insurance trust has, uh, offered us forty thousand dollars. Motion is to notify our partners at Baja that we feel this is a acceptable, um, settlement offer and intend to accept the offer and forward the check on to them and consider our obligation fulfilled regarding the roof damage in ISOMO.
One quick question. As part of that motion, were you going to say that within ten days, that you'd like to have them respond to any questions?
Absolutely, that would be part of the, the notice of staff, is if they have any questions, to please get back to us within ten days, we'd like to settle.
Understand that. Anybody have any other questions?
I have one question. I don't remember going along with the forty thousand, and I know I'm racking my brain. Could I be updated a little bit on when we agreed on the forty thousand?
We, we agreed to forward to the Civic Center any insurance money that we received, if we received anything from MCIT.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't see that.
Well, um, but no, that was part of the contract that we had with them. Part of the contract said that if we received insurance funds for that roof, that the city would pass those on. And that's what this forty thousand is, is a settlement offer from MCIT, and they are offering us forty thousand. We're saying, we're going to accept that even though Baja wants the whole thing covered. Did I answer your question? Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number five, the state, uh, contract vehicle purchase approval of. Uh, motion is to accept the, uh, proposals as presented. Oh, that was a consent calendar. I apologize, you're absolutely right. There is a motion regarding that though, and that's the motion that to set the over, the overage money from selling the used vehicles to put that into the equipment certificate fund to help offset the additional money we spent on the street sweeper. An ISOMO.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item six, the downtown motel. We did receive a presentation from Jennifer Bergman, our HRA director, uh, regarding the downtown motel. At this point, it's just FYI, expectations are that we will all receive a complete presentation at the next meeting. But, uh, just to kinda bring you up to a little bit of speed, uh, HRA ha- uh, Jennifer Bergman and HRA have entered into a purchase agreement with the owner of the downtown motel. Now, that's pending a number of things, but e- especially pending approval of the HRA board. It hasn't gone to the HRA board, and there's a lot of details to work out, which is why she's not standing here this evening. But, um, I just wanted to let you know that, that things have progressed with that, and I'll let Jennifer bring you all up to detail speed in two weeks. But there's, there's certainly gonna be more detail.
If you remember, we as council forwarded it on to the HRA when we had received that initial request of, of city buying of the seventy-five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
That's where we are.
Thank you. Thank you, that item is complete. Item seven, Parks Department. Item seven, uh, A is the request to set up a new credit card account. I believe, uh, Parks Director Saylor explained the necessity for this. Uh, it may be a credit card, it might be an open charge account, but, uh, the Parks Department needs this from a matter of convenience. And personal finance moves to allow this request. ISOMO.
Other discussion?
Um, why wouldn't you have, uh, all the gas stations because of your tremendous account and share the wealth? Why wouldn't you just have the right, not only tonight, this motion be for this, but for any gas station within the range of your parks? Just to spread the wealth because, I mean, you, you have quite an impact.
We basically do.
Well, we have, uh, uh, two holiday stations, or two super miracles in the holidays. Um, basically, one's on Northside, uh, one on this side, one kind of in the middle, I say it, um, like, um. We're looking at credit cards, because it's across the street.
Yeah.
There's still need to, 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 um.
I did not ever see a council come forward for us, if you wanted to charge a HRA or, or a gas, I've never seen this before. I didn't know you had to go through the council to set up an account. Okay.
If I, if I could, respond to that, the state auditor sees credit cards as cash, and so they're very restrictive on that. And so anytime we have a credit card application going to be approved, we are going to bring that before the city council for your opportunity.
Oh, it's a new, it's a new policy, and, and if, if Mr. Bevins wants to include that as part of this motion, or it could be a separate motion, but, is for staff to put together a policy so that when there is that, like, that, like, forward.
Okay.
You need motion, glad you just.
We, we're gonna do that no matter what.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, I also understand that with a credit card, that there are, um, state imposed limits on what you can use on a credit. And I can't really speak in any detail, but when the library set one up about two years ago, we were advised by the city administrator of that. Maybe it only applied to us. I don't, you might wanna just check. Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven B, which is the KLM for kids, uh, Miracle League fundraiser, has already been, um, voted on and, and just, uh, uh, one of, i- i- if you weren't listening at the very beginning of the council meeting, what a fantastic opportunity that is for the city of Brainerd, Parks and Rec. And we wanna thank again, uh, the KLM and the family and, uh, firm for this opportunity.
I, is that me on that note? If you don't mind, I'd like to send a personal letter on behalf of the city to them for their generous.
Thank you, ma'am.
That'd be great.
All our dogs should be eating puppies. Item eight, item eight, Engineering Department, uh, those were two consent, uh, calendar items, and there is no more. Were they not both consented? Yes, they were both consented, and there are no other. End of report.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Public Works.
Um, Mr. Bevins is in exactly a half an hour, so I hope he lets me have that much time.
God, the mayor kept butting.
We have actually twelve items, you'll see ten listed. Item number one, downtown landscape quotes, um, and I should let Mark quickly just, you know, 'cause he was the one that let the bids out, and you'll understand why we decided to go with the bid we did. Now, I'll go with that part.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Um, as a result of a meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago with some downtown property owners, it was requested that the city re- get some new quotes for the downtown landscaping and maintenance. Um, one item of, of particular interest that they asked to be excluded from the quote was the cost of purchasing and maintaining hanging baskets downtown. There are twenty-six of them, I think, that are part of the, uh, original quote. The original quotes came in quite high, that's why they wanted to see if the, some of the costs could be pared down. Uh, we originally got two quotes, uh, and so we asked the quilters to, if they would be interested in submitting a new quote for the, uh, pared-down services, if you will, or going back to the services that, um, have been provided in the past. And both did submit, uh, new quotes, uh, one from, uh, Northwoods Landscaping and one from Arrow Management. Uh, the one from Arrow Management is the lower quote, it's nine thousand seven hundred and.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five dollars. Um, the other quote, Northwoods Landscaping, was higher. They are the ones that have been doing the work the past four, five years. How long it's been since we've, uh, had the services? Um, so, I'll turn it back to the chair with that explanation.
Um, with the two quotes, and Northwoods would be coming in around twelve thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars, and, um, Arrow was at nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. There was a twenty-six hundred dollar difference. Uh, we look, we talked about coming with a quote after the other quotes were submitted, but we looked at the quote, and it was dated May first, which was the day of the packet, and this was a non-formal bid style, it was asking, you know, to submit the bid, so there wasn't a timeframe where you had to have quotes in by a certain time. So, we really don't feel that, you know, this quote came in really after the fact, and the person saw the quotes. Otherwise, it wouldn't be the difference of twenty-six hundred and fifty dollars. So, out of committee, we are, the motion will be to accept the low bid from Arrow, uh, Management, an amount of nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. I would so move.
And ask that, in the future, that, uh, the ti- a time be identified for the quotes.
Yeah.
And offset in that.
Um, now, do you wanna clarify what that will include?
Yes.
Please.
Um, uh, nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Just the landscaping downtown.
Yeah, and, uh, let me just quickly, the landscaping maintenance for downtown city of Brainerd, planting up plants and sixteen urns and maintenance of the urns, this price is without the twenty-six hanging baskets, but includes turning on and off the irrigation system and literizing of the irrigation system. Any fixing of broken heads or line is time and material basis, and that's what that one is based on. Um, Mark and I came up, those hanging baskets were costing about five to six hundred dollars. We'd start checking out these quotes from what they were to what they, just to put a hanging basket up was, uh, the, the, the cost was about five hundred dollars a hanging basket. You can buy it for like twenty dollars, but the maintenance is almost five hundred dollars on each hanging basket, so. Uh, that was the, the lion's share of all these bids that were coming in. If I would take in that out, we can get these bids back into, um, more of a financial basis, so.
Any other discussion? Uh, Kelly?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I know there were some downtown business owners that had some discussion regarding the scope of the project and the quality of the workmanship, et cetera, et cetera. Has there been any communication regarding this most recent scope of project, which has changed from our original bid from those same business owners?
The business owners did need it a week ago, last Friday, at, uh, two o'clock or two-thirty, uh, in the conference room, and I was part of it, and I think, uh, a couple of us, Mark, uh, yep. And, um, the consensus was to re-bid this and look for, you know, less expensive, and the consensus was also, um, Davis here, was to re, you know, not have the hanging baskets, you know, and we knew that that was the high maintenance end of the bids as we were looking at. And, uh, there'll be more discussion on item number two about that meeting, um, and some of that, what you're asking, we'll discuss in item number two.
But this really accomplished what they wanted.
Yeah, yeah, this accomplished the bidding part, and then we'll discuss on item number two the rest of the meeting.
Two questions, um, do you know what their hourly rate is for them for the irrigation? I mean, they have the used base site stated seventy-five per hour.
Good question, I don't think it's on the quote.
Okay. Um, and then the other question I had, because the original quote had so much, or the original bid proposal had so much on there, and some of the, uh, the no's from that meeting were, of course, the twenty-six baskets was, was next, and the paving of the surfaces, the weeding of that. But there's other things on there that the business owners and, uh, building owners agreed to, and apparently must've been on the original bids, such as the, the cleanup, uh, the trash removal, the, the, the deheading of the, the plants, the weed control and the mulch area. And I don't see any of that, um, here, so I just wanna make sure that the ninety-seven hundred is including those items still and not just for, you know, planting up these urns.
The, may I?
Go ahead.
The trash pickup is a separate, uh, price. We have a, there's a separate contractor that, that does trash removal, um, for downtown, and that's not part of the, um. The landscaping maintenance will in, does include maintaining all the landscape islands, um, that are downtown. Um, what was your other question?
Well, uh, again, it was, uh, the, the, the trip, it was picking up the cigarette butts, that was probably.
Yeah, it wasn't trash removal, like emptying dumpsters.
Oh.
It was cleaning trash out of the flower.
Oh, right, there's a lot of cigarette butts down there, that's for sure. Uh, I will be meeting with, uh, Arrow, if you decide to, uh, award the quote, I will be meeting with Arrow and explaining to them the, the details that they'll have to, to abide by in cleaning up downtown.
So it's safe to say that all those things that were in there is what's covering in the ninety-seven hundred? Okay.
So from last year, the only thing that's changed from last year's bid will be the hanging baskets?
Not completely. What's changed, well, from last year's bid, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
That's helpful. We're basing it on.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, motion carries.
Item number two, downtown.
Item number two, downtown special service district assessment. Um, Jeff has got quite a bit of stuff in here in the memo. This was discussed in that couple hour meeting with the downtown. Um, out of that meeting, they were kinda looking for maybe if the city could pick up, you know, the half the cost or some of the cost of the downtown. I was very quickly stating that I did not think the city should move forward, um, and, and, you know, pick up any cost for downtown in helping with, with this, um, nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollar bid that we got. Um, so that is the motion basic, well, the really, yeah, the motion is to leave it as is, the way it's been for the last three years and I would so move.
I think. Other discussion?
Um, and I know that Dave is here and he had, all the downtown people, he had a, by a raise of hands, all, all of the downtown people did jump in and say that, yeah, they thought the city should be involved. I was looking at it from a competitive standpoint, um, you know, you know, and I was just saying, let's take another furniture store on Neil Avenue that's competing with a furniture store downtown and they would have to participate in the, you know, the downtown cost and it would just not be fair, so. But, anyway, um, right now that'll be our motion.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I just, uh, I support the motion, but I have a question. Uh, we do supply hanging baskets to portions of the city without assessing. On, I believe, on Laurel Street between Sixth and Second, I believe those baskets in front of the courthouse and City Hall and, and Judicial Center, et cetera, and some private businesses, uh, the attorney's office, the eye glasses, the police office. I believe those baskets aren't assessed and I just wanna clarify that.
Are there any? They're not there anymore.
Oh, they're gone. Okay, they were there.
Yeah, you were right. You are right. They were there one time and they weren't assessed.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we're not, so at this point, we're not really providing outside of this, uh, we're not providing any decorative plants in the city at large.
Okay. Thank you. I thought it was a trouble. As I was not brought up, that's a very good point. Thank you, Mister Devens. Yes, we have a motion in a second.
Any other discussion? Sorry, Dave. Don't have a problem.
That's, that's.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? You wanted, you can, you wanna speak now?
Or an open, open forum?
No, if you're not.
Oh, that's right, we can't, I'm sorry.
You can come up here and just quickly.
Mister Sheila, did you not allow citizens to speak during your meeting or?
Yeah, we did. We had lots of people speaking.
Okay, thank you for making.
I, I didn't speak at the committee because I was assuming the wrong time for the committee. I came here and thought it was too late, so I apologize for that. I'd like to thank the council for considering our motion, like, and Mark and, uh, Jeff for the work they did. I would like to make one point in relation to the payments. Uh, when the downtown was renovated, it was done in a sixty-forty split because the previous council decided that the city also benefited from the downtown. Not everybody in the downtown wanted the reconstruction, but, uh, the city council decided that that was for our own good that we had to do that. Um, with that, you, Gary mentioned he has a business and this kind of thing, some of the other people do too. As you own businesses, the city council hasn't told you that you have to pay for flowers in front of your business. Mary mentioned that she didn't feel that at a previous meeting that the city should participate and she said she's happy to put flowers in front of her business. We're happy to do some things for flowers, but we don't own the streets. We're paying, uh, forty percent of the street reconstruction. My case is about sixty-eight thousand dollars. And the flowers are brought in after the fact and the city council, the previous city council just decided that we had to pay for it all. Now, everybody in the downtown business, building owners association that we formed to address this flower thing felt that it was unfair. We were not consulted previously about this. The city council just decided that they're going to do that. Now, Mary, the city council isn't telling you, you have to put flowers in front of your building. Gary, they're not telling you that you have to on a street that you don't own, but they're telling us, we gotta pay for it. I'm somewhat questioning the legality of this and, you know, you may not think it's a lot of money, but it adds up. You know, I'd like to spend some of this money on my buildings and this kind of thing to keep them up to codes because codes are a lot more expensive. Now that we have building inspectors and everything, we can't do the things we used to do. And I'm sure everybody at our meeting that we had with you said that they didn't think it was fair. And if you just say, well, we just want you to pay for it, it doesn't sound right to me. Um, I think that, again, we're all willing to pay a fair share, but we're not the only ones who benefit from a nice downtown. We don't own the streets downtown, the city does. For me to pay one hundred percent of it and every other owner down there, that is not fair. And I think you should maybe reconsider this, maybe put a motion where, let's put in what the previous city council had said initially. There's a sixty-forty split as fair. I think that would be something that should be discussed a little bit more. And we had a meeting, we all put our input in, but we're being ignored totally on that. I do appreciate the fact that you did the rebidding. I think that it will be a lot better. You're also allowing some of us to do flowers of our own and this kind of thing to help beautify the downtown. Um, but, again, I think the money thing, 'cause you're telling us, we gotta put flowers on property we don't own and we gotta pay for it. That's not right.
Mister Chair, I think we, uh, probably should review all the minutes of when that was put in. It was my understanding that there had been numerous meetings with the downtown group and that the plans that ultimately came into being were the result of many of those meetings. And, uh, at least that's what I was looking for. I wasn't that.
May I? Yeah. That is at the time when we had the, uh, Main Street Committee, Main Street Program in operation. And it was the Main St- Main Street Committee that, uh, was responsible for trying to organize the discussion about downtown landscaping. I tried to go through the minutes to see if there was anything there. I didn't find anything specifically about how the decision was reached, but at the time when we had the, uh, Main Street Committee, who was supposed to be acting on behalf.
Exactly.
Acting on behalf of downtown.
Yeah, that's exact- so it wasn't as if something was just shoved on them. It was certainly, I think, what most of the council's understanding that, and in fact, some of them were up here and that that was what they.
Jeff, do you happen to know about the dollar amount or the percentage for the city of Brainerd? You know, you have the formula put together.
The, um, yes, the, it, it's roughly, with our ownership of the parking lots, um, city-owned property picks up about ten percent of, um, the cost of, uh, the, the landscaping. We, we own about one-tenth of the, the front footage.
Kelly?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Just a comment, uh, before we voted, I asked if the proposal was acceptable to the da- the downtown businesses. I, I certainly don't expect Mister Perner to speak for the entire downtown business owners. But I'm somewhat surprised to hear less than a minute after I was told that, yes, it was acceptable, that, no, no, it's not. And I might not have supported the motion had I thought that there was gonna be, and I certainly don't wanna imply that there's significant opposition, but we certainly heard from one strongly opposed and I'm not in favor of enforced beautif- I'm not in favor of local businesses beautifying our city beyond their own properties. And so, well, I, you know, I certainly like the flowers. I, I agree that I, you know, would like, would like the proposal to be supported by the businesses that are gonna pay for it. I presume they support snow removal, that's why we do it. They want it removed. But presumably they want the flowers, 'cause I asked and was told yes.
Thank you.
There was two separate issues here and when I was in that meeting, it was clear, if we're gonna bid this, first of all, we denied the bids. There was nothing gonna happen to downtown. And if we're gonna go out for bids and we accept the bids, that downtown will pay for it. Otherwise, don't go for bids and the project don't get back. So, and in that room, I was clear as a bell that I'm, I am not forcing this on. It was just if it gets rebuilt, that the rest of the town ain't gonna pay for it. And downtown there said, go ahead, we'll take care of the weeds. We'll do this, we bid it, do this. Well, then, fine, we'll do this, bring the bid forward, but if you don't want this, I am with Mister Devens. I am not forcing this or making that, you know, a forceful action. I am just saying, if you accept it, which we did, and you guys accept that this bid, then you pay for it.
Mark?
Yeah. Thank you, Alderman Sheila. That's exactly pretty much what I was gonna say. We did exactly what we were asked to do as a result of that committee meeting, or that, that group meeting that was held, exactly. And that's why we went out for the votes, because that's what they wanted.
Yes, and that's my understanding. So I apologize, Mister Devens, if there was some confusion there.
Well.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
To make it clear, I, you weren't doing at the meeting, um, I specifically asked everybody what they wanted. They wanted a lower bid. They all said that they'd be willing to pay a fair portion. They also asked for the city to consider making some contribution to this too. And I had suggested, you know, we had done the sixty-forty split in the past and, you know, I kind of asked everybody whether they were in agreement with that and they said they were. Now, we're not saying, don't put flowers in. We're saying, we'll pay our fair share because we get some benefit out of it too. We're not saying, forget about it completely, but we're saying we feel the city should also pay some. So if there's a misunderstanding, Gary, I apologize, but I was very precise in asking everybody what they thought and that was unanimous from everybody I asked, every business, excuse me, every property owner said that.
And I agree with that, but you do remember before you even finished the words, I said, I don't agree that the rest of the town should pay. And you looked right at me and I said it twice in that room.
You may have said that, but the council.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just going in the council what the owners of the bus- the property said.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe Jeff has the same comment, 'cause I, I mean, when we talk the sixty-forty split, that's the street reconstruction program. So that's not, and that is carried citywide. That's not just the downtown district, that's a residential street, that's commercial street throughout the entire city, correct, Jeff?
Well, t- typically, I don't reconstruct, it's fifty-fifty and the, the council came up with a special formula for downtown. They recognized that as being a slightly different situat- situation, so they did a sixty-forty.
But a street reconstruction project is that formula. We don't have a beautification program or anything else anywhere.
Right. Nope. And it, I ca- if I can too, Mister Chairman, the, um, my recollection of that meeting, it wasn't unanimous. I think there were one or two, uh, property and business owners downtown that, that commented that they actually thought the hanging baskets were a good idea and were willing to pay for the cost of that.
Missed the moment, there's one of them.
Yes.
So, maybe if we don't have beautiful, beautification projects everywhere, anywhere else in the city, why then maybe should we consider making an exception for downtown? Maybe we should just, um, you know, listen to Mary, talk about our budget, uh, being, maybe we should not do anything with flowers downtown. Let them be on their own the way the rest of the city is. We don't have to worry about it. And see how well downtown is able to beautify themselves for themselves.
You know, at the, at the last meeting, Perner had mentioned that that's kind of what he wanted to do, is to talk to the downtown town businesses and, uh, try to figure out from them if they wanted to go ahead and, hey. Come on to the mic.
I'm gonna ask the council now, do you want to go back to item number one and reconsider what went forward for much better? No.
I think it's a subject that will be ongoing, but right now, it's getting late. We, I mean, it's getting late in the year. We either better do it or not do it. Maybe we should do it.
But, you know, it's something we could bring up later, the, the number two, the, um, mythology and maybe food. You know, a subcommittee with, from downtown people involved as best.
I would think the next time, please adjourn to the downtown meeting so that more of the council members can be part of it, um, and get an understanding. I feel very, you know, unfair with everybody else, what I heard in Jeff's speech. I'd have to be.
And it wasn't a published meeting.
No, it wasn't, and that's why.
Right, and, and we had two committee members there, so.
Two committee members.
And that, you know, wasn't right either, but you didn't know it.
Yeah.
Um, but you're going to have a subcommittee then at some point, and I would say not right now, but at some point. Then you need to include businesses from other parts of town. Not to, and ask them if they wanna pay, 'cause they'll be taxed for downtown. And, uh, Alderman Sheila, Chairman Sheila's point is, is right on. You're asking the competition to pay the competition's dues. And they probably got a hard time reporting that.
Mister Chair?
Yeah.
Um. At a level, I, I, again, respectfully disagree with, with Alderman Cop. I think that the downtown is a special area in the city and I would agree with Mister Perner. I think we need to work together with the downtown. I mean, if the downtown business owners decide that they want to do it on their own, I think, you know, they need to present us with that plan. Not us just say, we're gonna cut everything off, you guys are on your own, let's see what you come up with. I mean, we paid for those banners on College Drive. I mean, I would be more than willing to consider taking some money like that and helping beautify the downtown. I mean, that's something, maybe not this year, but I think that's something that we need to look at more in the long term instead of just kind of like from the hip decide, yeah, yea or nay. But, I mean, if we're gonna look at spending money in order to improve traffic in our town and improve the business in our town, I think that would be money that would be well spent.
Sounds like you're volunteering to do something.
And I'm with you on all of that. I just didn't wanna make this motion on item number one and expect the taxpayers to pay it on item number two. And I was clear in the meeting and I was clear here. There's two separate issues.
Yeah, and I feel a little out of it because I wasn't at that meeting, so, you know, I'm kind of in counsel and Bevan's position, or, wait a minute.
But, again, keeping in mind that it's really a bigger issue than just flowers.
Mm-hmm, right, yeah.
And so, you know, taking a couple thousand here and throwing out some flowers is not gonna solve what I think we're all really concerned about.
And I wanna thank you, Dave, for giving all our work.
It's the equity piece.
Thank you. You know, I wanna work with you, you know.
And, you know, we haven't had a meeting downtown for quite some time. Maybe sometime this summer, we should have a joint meeting again, you know. We did, I don't remember when, remember when the last one we had?
Well, it wasn't all that long ago. Just before Christmas, wasn't it?
It was winter, I remember that.
The individual that was coordinating those has, his business, he has moved his business from up, from downtown.
Kevin.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I don't know anybody else.
Mister Parks?
I burned up my half hour.
Yeah, you did. We got a lot.
They did have a conversation, uh, with Mister Per- Perner, um, afterwards and he agreed, and that's why it asked, uh, you two gentlemen for the list of b- business owners, building owners, because he agreed to, to try to establish a downtown association again as far as, um, being able to communicate better than what has been done in the past. And, you know, that's, those are the things that we're working at this point. Um, and I realize that there's a completely separate group as far as, uh, businesses that are renting and, and they need to be notified as well, but there's gotta be a, a, a s- a go-to source and I, I appreciate you at least volunteering and I think that we need to work, um, in order to be able to capture those names, information and establish a downtown association so things like this can get resolved prior to coming.
So the bottom line is, um, unfortunately, we, or fortunately, however we're gonna look at it, we've voted to accept the bids. We voted to keep the formula the same, but we also agreed that we're going to work with the downtown business people to, to come up with something that they and us would, would look at being fair.
You want that in the form of a motion, I'll make it. So that they know that we wanna work with them.
So we don't have this meeting every year?
Yes, I will, yes. I will make that in the form of a motion and we'll work with you and maybe Dale can find some.
I was second.
Can you, can you, uh, restate your motion?
My motion is to work with the downtown group and, and the chair pick the people from the, the council here that can work with the downtown and come back for next, so we don't have the same issue.
Mm-hmm. Who was the second? The intern, Dave. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries.
At five-thirty, we started with some of these items, so if I start messing them up, it's because it's been a long.
You only got five minutes left, but you're gonna stay with me.
Item number three, Buffalo Hills Lane, and you read a lot about it, but we do have a motion, um, to, the motion out of committee is to invite the Mills. Item number three, Buffalo Hills Lane, and you read a lot about it, but we do have a motion, um, to, the motion out of committee is to invite the Mills family, whoever represents the Mills, and Positive Realty, to a future meeting in regards to Buffalo Hills Lane, so that we can go over some of the stuff that Jeff has put on this one-page thing. And Mary has some more stuff she wants part of this motion, it ended up being a paragraph, so I couldn't write that, so I'm gonna let her add that on, and we'll make, you know, make the motion.
Oh, we simply asked the engineer to, um, research policies, um, one of the things that was brought to our attention was that if a construction takes.
You're still gonna make the motion, then we'll go through.
Yeah, just the motion, this is long.
Yeah, it is long. What was part of that motion?
The motion includes the engineer researching policies that would deal with a contractor who used a street to the point that, uh, it began to be destroyed.
I take, I take impact fees.
Impact fees, right. Uh, also any policies that deal with, uh, how collector streets, um, if it's possible. And what kind of a policy you would assess developments on either side of a collector.
And I would so move.
Second.
You get that? Now you can see why I did not wanna repeat Mary's motion.
So the motion, the way I understand it, is to invite people, the owners of the property, in this case, uh, probably Mills and.
Yep.
And, um, Positive Realty to the meeting, and in the meantime, staff is going to do research.
Right.
As to, uh, impact fees, that.
And, and policy issues on collector's.
Did I get it?
I think you did.
And Gary made the motion, I was your second.
I did, I thought I did.
You did, okay, any other discussion, yes, Mr. Beavens?
Why, why just those two property owners and not all the property?
That's all that's left to be developed, the developers. There's six hundred and forty acres of Mills and about, you had mentioned quite a few for positive.
Isn't this Buffalo Hills Lane?
Yeah.
Yeah, but after we hear from them, we'd be perhaps having public hearings with all of these folks.
Yeah.
Okay, good, so this isn't the only people.
Oh, no, no, no.
This is just.
Just to see what they wanna do.
Thank you, this is like, pretty limited.
Okay, thank you, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Item number four, Fourth of July event, street closure applications, as you can see, they're in the packet. Four A is community action, and four B is the Eagles Club, um, I'm gonna take each one separately, the motion will be to approve community action, and I would so move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
And the reason I took four B separately, um, the motion is to approve the Eagles Club, but no food or drink, should leave their premises, people, they have to have people to watch, and the ampl- amplifier has to face west, and pretty much like we did last year, and I would so move.
Second.
Other discussion?
It took us a while to figure out which way to face that amplifier.
Right, we, we're, Jimmy and I are gonna take the hit this year.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Item number five, Willow Street bike lanes, we did have, um, discussion in there, as a matter of fact, there was quite a bit of discussion, we had the pastor here, Joe, Julie, Karen, Jessica, Ed, Eleanor, so, uh, we had some great discussion, our motion out of committee is to go with the walkable, bikeable plan that is presented, with a bike lane on both sides with six, six-foot width, and leave the parking on the south side as is, and that's the motion, and there were, even the pastor said he can live with it, so that's the motion.
Second, other discussion?
And I wanna thank the walkable, bikeable committee for doing a wonderful job in the community, and to bring a, a tough situation, and Mark for throwing it in at the last minute to get her done, so now we can move on, so, thank you everybody.
No other discussion?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, just curious, because I, I know that, um, there are so many alternatives to bike paths, um, do we nee- do we need to clarify exactly that we're gonna have one on each side at this point, I mean, can we explore different bike paths and different, I mean, I have a mock-up drawing of an idea, and my thought is, you know, do we need to clarify that right now, that we are going to allow a six-foot bike path here, and a six-foot, we do have to, okay?
We're talking about just Willow Street?
Or just Willow Street.
My motion going forward is other streets, and that's bikeable.
Well, because Willow Street is, um, I guess with the, the vehicle count being fifteen hundred to two thousand, and not nearly as, uh, well-traveled as, let's say, Oak Street or Sixth, my, my question is, is at this point, while making this motion, do we have to, we do have to clarify where these bike paths are going?
Yeah, for the church's sake, and for the people that were here, and all, everybody here, and the bike, walkable, bikeable committee have done a wonderful job with everything else, I do wanna stay exactly how per plan, so that everybody has a comfort level when they leave here.
Mr. Beavens? No, I was just trying to see. Any other comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I so much want to support this, but I cannot for this reason, I'm very grateful for the accommodations made to the church property, and I fully support that. I don't have a problem with there being a bike path on each side of the street, but I do have a problem with identifying it. It will mean there is no parking on the, at the north side, then. And we really, I don't think, have given those folks a chance to be heard, I'm afraid they'll read about it in the paper, or hear it somewhere, and then they're going to wonder why they didn't have more opportunity to speak. We really take from them a benefit that most other people in the city have, that is, the opportunity to park in front of your house. And so if they have company, and, yes, some of them have pretty good driveways, and some of them not so much, but they have company, where are they gonna go? Where are they gonna park? And, yeah, I suppose you can say that, but it just seems like we, I had hoped we could wait and make a concerted effort to visit with those folks. That's my only object, and I wish it weren't so, I wish somehow we could have notified them in advance, said this is what we planned to do, we'd like to hear from you.
They were notified.
But, but I don't know how clear it all was.
We talked about it at the last council meeting, we said that we would publicly notice it per the council's policy, you got an article in the newspaper, and I thought we did everything you asked us to.
Many meetings ago, Rick Fargo came here, it was designed for the north side, and only one person showed up and asked to have it moved to the south side, and it was Rick Fargo, he came here, and just because he was the only one that said anything, we didn't see any problems, we decided back in February to move it to the, to the south side in front of the church, because Mr. Fargo came to the meeting, and Jeff was here, and we just decided to do that, because he was the only person that spoke for the north side. And now, he didn't, he was here tonight, and did not come up and say that he was opposed to us going back and removing it, so I watched him as he was in and out of the committee, so. And then we also, you know, basically, last meeting was April seventh, we had one solid month for Mary to go door-to-door and ask those people if they wanted to park it. I hope she did that.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't do that, but that's not really my job.
Okay.
I mean, the council has a shared responsibility.
Then we did that, Dave. Any other comments? Mr. Beavens?
Oh. Go ahead, I'm ready. The six-foot bike lane on the north side of the parking lane. To me, that's al- it almost, and I'm a, I'm a fairly avid biker, I take my chances on Washington Street every day, so I have some experience with this. Um, I, I, I don't understand why that's there, I mean, I might vote against this just because of that, and I want the bike lane, but to me to put, it's almost like, well, we've got the six-foot, let's, let's stick it there, if you've ever biked along car doors that open and close, on the outside traffic side of, I'd rather drive down the middle than along parked cars where doors can open, and on between traffic lanes and parking lanes. And it's, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure there might be a logical explanation. This is one of the best bike lanes in the area, if you take Riverside Drive and follow up the county that, or what, I live on County Road Three, Mill Avenue, there is nothing like this, so I look at this as being luxurious for some of them, but go ahead.
I can see what Councilman Beavens is saying, he's talking about the, the bike lane next to the parked cars, that being an issue, I'm just kinda thinking about that, there's so little parking on that street, that I think the only time you're gonna see cars parked there are funerals, and during church.
Yeah.
And when Mary has company.
I don't live over there.
Yeah, I'm not familiar, I'm not familiar on Mill Avenue, or Riverside Drive, where there's a biking lane on the traffic, I'm not familiar with where you're biking about here. They're, they're driving down the middle, and I've got people that complain all the time that that road was built with no bike lanes, and you've got, you know, six inches on each side of the road to work with, and there's a tremendous amount of bike traffic on that, and that's why I'm using that in Riverside Drive, if everybody's driven on the county side of it. You missed, you missed my point, on the traffic side. Yeah. Parked cars, like you've shown in our cross-section, I think that's certainly doable if needed, I'm questioning that twelve feet of bike lane that goes from sixth to thirteenth is necessary, twelve feet wide, and it almost looks like we're just trying to fill space. And, and with that portion of it, I'd much rather see eight feet on the north side and get rid of that. That, that's, that's my perspective, because no bikers, there, everybody's gonna be riding on the north side, where it's much safer. And, no, but like Dave said, nobody, I mean, unless you're driving Sunday morning, or during the funeral, it's not gonna matter either, so. I don't know, I just think that's a dangerous potential.
You're just trying to prolong our committee meeting.
I think we should go back.
So the motion is to approve the plan.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the plan with the two bike lanes, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries, five to two.
I told my wife it'd be about eleven o'clock when we get home, I'm eating.
You're doing well.
Item number six, sanitary sewer, Holly Street and Grove Street, um, between Ninth, North Ninth Street to North Tenth Street. Um, and the motion here is basically to go ahead with, um, DeChantel's bid of, was it nineteen thousand dollars?
No, this, this is.
Okay, go ahead Jeff, help me out on this one, it's been five hours.
Okay, this is, um, this is a, a sanitary sewer that we've had some blockages in, uh, it's, it's misaligned, uh, it's not really located within the alley, uh, and it runs under several garages, uh, after the last blockage, we did, uh, try to clean the line and, uh, cambered it, and, uh, we've got a lot of, it's an older clay tile, uh, sanitary sewer, it has a lot of fractures in it, uh, so we really can't use our jet cleaner, uh, to clean it, because, um, it'll, it'll basically just disintegrate, it'll pull, pull the tiles apart. Uh, so, we've put together a sketch, uh, we're proposing to realign the sewer, get it back in the alley right away, all from underneath the garages, and then reconnect, um, I believe it's five services. Um, the total project costs were estimated about twenty-one thousand, plus maybe about three thousand of, uh, engineering, um, we wanted to just bring the condition of the sanitary sewer to the council's attention, um, and get direction from the council to move forward with, um, receiving quotes for it, we, we've got a, uh, design prepared, uh, we would like to solicit quotes, and, uh, get the sanitary sewer replaced this summer. Um, presently, we have plenty of money in the sanitary sewer fund, we've got about two hundred and sixty thousand in that account, so we have plenty of money, uh, to, to cover the cost of, of the replacement.
But we don't have a bid from DeChantel.
No, that is item number nine.
Okay.
Give me a little bit of a break, I started sliding ahead. Item number six is the motion to approve, um, engineer's request to move forward with the project.
Second.
Mr. Beavens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just, just a question, being that this was all just tore up, two summers ago, I'm taking it, this is a new, new problem, it's a new to us problem, we didn't know about this.
Right, right, and, and we are not gonna get in the street.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna connect on to the, uh, sanitary sewer, um, the north, uh, in the alley on the north side of, uh, of the street itself.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Item number seven, um, and basically, I'm gonna start out with, I wanted to get this off the dead center, this is a, this is another project that we looked on on April seventh, that has not moved anything since now, so improvement thirteen oh six, twenty-eighth street reconstruction, is the motion from council is to adopt the resolution, to order improvements, plans, and specs, and there'll be some contingencies as far as what happens with the county and Oakland Township.
If we don't work it out with Oakland, it's a drop.
And if things don't work out with Oakland, it will be, this project will drop, but we're trying to get it off the dead center and send a message to Oakland Township, you know, they gotta do something, send something to the attorney, so they got something to move on, send something to Jeff, so that he can move with the project, but the project's gotta go, and there's no sense of urgency until we make this motion. And that's the motion?
Take it. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I think it was roll call, isn't this a?
This would be a resolution, ordering that.
Oh, this is a resolution, okay, yep. Schiller?
Yes.
Orkinagin?
Yep.
Co?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Matten?
Yes.
Beavens?
Yes.
Parks?
Yep.
Item number eight, twelve twenty-three Pine Street, we're gonna take this report into the attorney's report, under the attorney's.
Heard of it?
Item number nine, storms and sanitary sewer repairs, no, we talked about DeChantel. And I'll get to the next stage, and that is to, it was, um, Jeff asked four contractors to bid on it, DeChantel's the only one that came back, um, with this price, and, uh, I'm trying to see his number here, real quick. Yes, and Jeff can quickly jump on, you wanna help me out Jeff here, on exactly what this entails?
Yes, this is, uh, we had a couple of failures of our, uh, pipes this winter, uh, one is the, uh, sanitary sewer, uh, collection system that is on, uh, South East Seventeenth Street between, uh, Norwood and Laurel, the, um, uh, we had a, in fact, there's a photo or two in, in the packet on it, but our, our catch basins crumbled on us, and the pipe connecting those, uh, as well as the pipe, uh, connected the two catch basins to, to a manhole, uh, so, we have to replace that entire system, uh, we've got, uh, you know, the street basically caving in, uh, uh, in those areas. Um, so, we, we initially, uh, started requesting quotes, uh, to repair that storm sewer, and as we were doing that, we had a failure of a sanitary manhole on, um, Fifteenth Street, uh, between Pine and, um, Oak Street, and, uh, that one, um, the, basically, the, the manhole structure just crumbled on us, and, and we have, you know, problems with the pipe, so in that particular case, we wanna replace the manhole structure and replace the pipe that's underneath the road, uh, so those two projects put together are, are requesting.
The bid amount is for seventeen thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty cents, and that, the motion is to accept the bid from Mr. DeChantel, even though he was the only one that was bitter, and it comes close to the engine, I would say.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Item number ten, medical runs, um, we did not come out of the committee with a motion, because we don't need one if we're not gonna move forward, you know, reinstating it, but, um, I was at the meeting, and what I had addressed was the consensus from the fire advisory board when I was there was not to move ahead with the medical runs. And I heard some grumbling, and I talked to some people, and most, what I gathered from there was not to move forward at this time with medical runs.
Just let me.
Yeah.
Say that I also was at that meeting, and it, and so was Pat, it was very clear that, even though it may not seem to cost the city a brainer much money, because we're taking this, this new look at the fire advisory group, we're basically saying, you're our partner, and they're saying, well, if we're your partner, and you have ours, I mean, we look at, when we had the, um, medical runs, we were looking at miles, but in reality, it's the time on the truck, as the truck sits there for fifteen, twenty minutes, whatever it may be, that's time that's on the truck, and the point that that committee meeting was that that is also some of their time, wear and tear that they pay for, so until we can convince the fire advisory group that they should encompass that, it looks like, um, the city, again, is pushing to, um, do something that the advisory committee doesn't want to do, such as when we would just give them the bill, they, they don't have any say. such as when we would just give them the bill, they, they don't have any say in it, so, that, that was very clear.
Did they make a formal recommendation on that and if not, why?
They, they were this close, um, Mr. Hool, um, he, he basically, he was one step away from making a motion, but he felt he wasn't the one to make, be able to make the motion, that it should've been one of the other individuals.
Can we apologize, being the, the new authority of this committee, um, it was, was, it wasn't had on it. When we thought about it, we, the part of it was, just learned that we had to present a memo to the council this week and so I wasn't aware of it ahead of time, so we did talk about it, but, you know, if something this council would like, we could go back to the fire advisory board.
I have one more thing to add to that and, uh, you know, Kevin was in it, but he, he says that, um, the cost of moving that truck is fifty-six thousand miles when he deducts off of it. If he travels four miles, that's two dollars and twenty-four cents. Now, if you're on the other half of that and you're saying you're only gonna deduct two dollars and twenty-four cents and move the truck four miles and leave it run for twenty minutes, we don't have a true cost of what this is costing us. And, you know, I look at it, would you drive from, you know, up to my place for two dollars and twenty-four cents with a fire truck, a million dollar fire truck? That is not a true cost of this, you know, taking off and being fair to the rest of our partner. So we need to really look at it, I've asked Patrick, uh, there's gotta be some institutions that could come up that are true cause of what it really costs these million dollar trucks to be traveling. But two dollars and twenty-four cents for four miles is not right.
Well, and open above that, the problem that, as I see it, is that with the advisory committee and the fact that the advisory committee actually was, was formed because of the fact that entities such as, um, Corriff Lee would leaving, Valton Heskey might be leaving. So they wanted, uh, some input into the process and so if it, you know the old saying, if it cracks like a duck, it bobs like a duck.
That's Mary's saying.
So, in this particular case, even though I, I agree with a lot of comments that Chief has said, it's just that, that in this time when we have some entities that are looking at cheaper and less costly ways to get their fire service, I think we need to be on the lookout for ways that, that we can administer our services inexpensively and at least make it look that way. And, and so if we're providing the medical runs, but we don't cross over to Baxter, Baxter residents are wondering, or you could say, well, I'm came for that. You know, what service? You know, it's, it's a catch point too, it really is.
Oh, you don't, you know I would wanna speak on this. Cause I, a- a- and as you know, I've, you know, come right out, I have supported the medical runs from day one. And I certainly have no intention of contradicting the fire department. I like the way things are on the fire advisory board. I think they, the, the participants should have way more input than I should. But on medical runs, just on the issue of medical runs, I wanna rephrase what I just heard all of you say. With the same amount of money that you're already paying now, will not only come put your fire out, but when you fall out the ladder, our truck's got a fifty-fifty shot that we're gonna beat the ambulance there. Now, if that's you, do you wanna take that risk? I do, but I'll speak for me.
Alright.
Because I know it's backed up by.
I hope it never happens to you, Gary.
I know it's backed up by.
That's all I have to say.
Police Department.
Well.
The police department is there.
Somebody's gotta get there first and if it costs two, a minimal amount, for the same amount we're already paying, we're not gonna bill more. There's not gonna be a line item for medical runs anywhere, the fire contracts are the same. You've got a fifty-fifty shot, well, and in fairness in the city of Brainerd, it's probably greater than fifty-fifty. But the fire department will beat everybody there.
For a hundred and thirty years, the fire department's been there not doing medical runs, why are we reinventing the wheel?
That's like saying for a hundred and fifty years, we didn't use computers.
Well.
Kelly, I don't, I don't disagree with you, the problem is, is that we are now engaging in this fire advisory committee and, and yeah.
I started my conversation with you, I realized that.
Yeah, and, and I think we need to give the fire advisory committee.
Yeah.
A chance to work and then revisit it, I, you know, I agree with, I agree with.
A hundred percent, let's revisit it often and regularly. I just wanna support the, the medical runs, I think it's, I think it's, can't explain it any better than I will a hundred more times. Item number eleven, there was no action on that. Um, it'll be a Terry Kinder update and I'll let, um, Jeff real quick, um, just because it was here the last time, do you wanna know the results?
Okay, the, um, building official has been, uh, visiting the property daily. Um, last Thursday afternoon or I think it was late in the day Thursday, um, Terry completed the enclosure and met the, um, guidelines or, or met the interim completion requirements. So, uh, we had three days after the deadline in which, uh, the violation occurred, so, uh, we had the hundred dollar per day citation. Uh, that would apply for three days. Um, it's my understanding that, I think this morning, uh, that roof was back open a little bit, but it's been closed and, uh, I didn't see it today, but I've, I understand that shingles are going on, so, uh, so he's met the, uh, interim completion that was, uh, required by the council. We still have the second one that we're gonna be dealing with and we'll be, uh, putting him on notice again in writing that, um, just to remind him that the exterior of the structure needs to be complete by June second. That includes the removal of construction materials from the yard and restoration of the yard, um, and essentially completion of the exterior portion of the project and that's, uh, by June second. And if he fails to complete it by June second, then the hundred dollar per day citations will begin again.
Thank you for that. Item number twelve, code enforcement intern, um, we're looking for, and Jeff can help out real quick on that.
Uh, just, uh, we don't have that position filled yet, we have, uh, intro, or an offer out and, um, uh, one of the applicants is considering whether or not to accept that position.
Thank you. End of report.
Alright, thank you. Now we go to unfinished business. Um, scheduled is a public hearing, final reading of proposed ordinance fourteen thirteen and ordinance amending Brainerd zoning ordinance section fifteen dash two dash two, fifteen dash seventeen dash three, fifteen, five fifteen fifty-four dash five, uh, five fifteen dash fifty-four dash nine, five fifteen dash fifty-four eleven, five fifteen dash fifty-six five, five fifteen fifty-six nine and five fifteen fifty-six eleven. I'm glad everybody wrote that down. Um, basically it's changes in, in several different sections of the zoning code regarding small houses and infill. So this is a public hearing. And so, with that being said, um, I'll open the public hearing at, um, nine fifty-nine, or excuse me, nine forty-nine.
Kelly. Ed Shaw, five seventeen North Ninth Street, definitely exceeding my quota for talking on multiple issues. Anyway, if I, if I may, I do have, someone who couldn't be here would like me to read a brief statement if that would be okay with you. Linda Stephens, Century Twenty-One Realty, office out of Baxter, or does a lot of work in the city of Baird, I've worked with her before, and I'll quote, "As a Realtor, I am in support of city policy that supports increased home ownership. An important part of this is developing affordable housing. Furthermore, vacant lots in the neighborhood are very undesirable from a real estate point of view. For these reasons, I support the small house infill policy proposed. Thank you for the opportunity to share my views, Linda Stephens, Century Twenty-One, Brainerd Realty." And if I may briefly speak on my own account and speaking for myself, for no individual or entity or committee, I sent a letter to the council, which I saw in the packet online, so I won't, you know, repeat myself on that. And, well, I just asked to consider, it may be hard for some people to imagine why someone would wanna live in a small house. Just as it's tough for some to imagine why someone would wanna live in a big house, but there's certainly what you'd call a micro ten. There's some people who really like small houses, it's a, been reported in BBC News, Mother Earth News, there's people that like that. And it could really help us fill in some of these vacant lots, which I don't see being filled in by anybody else. And I, you know, our latest report on property, on sale prices, down eight, over eight percent in the last year, Baxter up seventeen percent. Whatever we're doing, we're not helping local property values. I just bought a house last week for twenty thousand dollars, great deal for me, that doesn't say a whole lot for the stability of our property values in the city. I think allowing smaller houses will possibly get some of these infill lots filled, some way to avoid just spreading vacant lots, which I worry a lot about what that's going to do to us long term. You know, let people do a small house, give them the freedom to do it, it's not gonna hurt anyone, it won't prevent someone else from having a big house and make it a few more buildings built and get some more people in the city and stop the spread of vacant lots. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that's here for a public hearing? Anyone else here for a public hearing? Anyone else? Um, I do have, since there isn't.
Well, has Mark got something?
Did you get a letter from the Realtors?
Yeah, and that's where I was gonna go, since there isn't anybody else coming forward. We, we received a letter from, um, the Greater Lakes Association of Realtors, rather than read this whole thing. I just wanted to make mention of a couple of things that they, um, were concerned about. Um, they say that however the small house ordinance does not explicitly restrict construction of four to seven hundred and fifty feet dwelling lots, the planning commission could issue a conditional use permit for the construction of a small house between four hundred and seven hundred and fifty on a non-fill, infill lot. Additionally, the proposed design standards of session five and eight of the text seem unnecessary as criteria for granting a conditional use permit. Secondly, the proposed design standards may add to the cost of building a small house. For example, five fifteen fifty-four dash eleven point three and five fifteen dash fifty-six dash eleven point three require that a small house incorporate any or all of the specified roof design features as, as, if they're compatible with existing development on block fronted. If a developer may prefer to have a simpler roof style in order to simplify construction and reduce the cost of the home. The city should weigh the cost effects of particular design requirements and determine whether they appropriately facilitate development of small houses that are affordable to prospective purchasers of such homes. Lastly, it's unclear how the small house ordinance intends to regulate two-family dwellings in the R-two district. Current texts could lead to a dwelling unit of two hundred square feet in the R-two district. So, there's.
Good question.
I'll record it. So, since, since this was the last piece of the public hearing, so I now post a public hearing at, uh, ten fifty-four, or, yeah, ten fifty-six.
Nine, nine, nine.
My question is, uh.
Nine fifty-six feels like ten.
The Realtor in here that signed is Linda Stephens and then the report that he just had is Linda Stephens and they contradict a little bit. So I just was kinda curious on that.
What?
Um, and I'm just gonna let everybody else hear from them.
I'd like the planner to identify his answer to these, uh, three points that were identified in the.
Well, I just saw this.
A response.
I just saw this tonight, uh, so I'm not prepared to, I'd like to, if I may, if I can answer your question. I would be most happy to look into this. If the city council is going to want to pursue small house discussions. If, if there's, under no circumstances is our city council willing to consider a house less than seven hundred and fifty square feet or the infill standards, or changing the minimum width, then why go through the, uh, work of, of trying to respond to these questions? So, my request, and hopefully we might be able to do it, is the first answer should be generally, are you in favor of the, of the concepts that are being submitted to you? If you're not, you can say everybody a lot of times.
One question, Mark. Mark, I am not up to now seeing your staff's recommendation on what you thought, you felt about this. I know you've listened to both sides, you've listened to everything, but you are not taking a stand on this issue. Can you tell me what your position is and your stance on this issue?
Well, I will answer it honestly as I can.
And that's how you're supposed to answer it.
I'm torn, I have two sides to this, I can see the benefits that this can do for the city on one hand. On the other hand, I don't think it's a community issue right now because I don't think there's a market. Um, we have lots in the community, just one that came up the other day on Norwood Street. Norwood and Fourteenth or Fifteenth, something like that, it's like, uh, forty by fifty, forty by a hundred or something, I don't know. A standard house will not fit on that lot. Um, what are we gonna do with those type of lots? And as I pointed out to you, in, or provided you with is a copy of a map that illustrates that we have over six hundred and eighty such type homes in the city now. Um, I do not have a copy of the lots that are non-conforming that, I think, uh, council member Madden and I had talked about it last week. We have not done a non-conforming lot map. So. My, the planning department's position on this is that there, it can create benefits for a lot of the lots that we just simply don't know what to do with. I think that if we have to have faith, though, in the conditional use permit process. We don't have faith in that process. For example, um, let's take North Town. Um, on the south side of North Town Street, that's all undeveloped. The north side of North Town Street is pretty well developed, there's a few empty lots. They're all typical, uh, split entry, fourteen hundred square foot homes with a pretty uniform appearance in the suburbs. There's an empty lot there, someone comes with a proposal for a small home that might be four or five hundred square feet on one of those empty lots. The conditional use permit process would require that individual to go through the planning commission and the city council to get approval for that small home. And there are criteria by which a conditional use permit is judged and there are seven of them. The two that really stick out of the seven are, the proposed use shall provide a total visual impression environment which is consistent with the environment of the neighborhood and the proposed use shall be sighted oriented and landscaped to produce a harmonious relationship of buildings and grounds to adjacent buildings and property. Well, through the conditional use permit process, one would have faith to think that the planning commission and the city council would say, wait a minute, four hundred square foot house in amongst these fourteen hundred square foot houses, that's not gonna work. And if you're gonna approve that conditional use permit, the condition would have to be such that it would be a minimum of, it'd have to meet the minimum housing standard, which is seven hundred and fifty square feet or a thousand, whichever one you wanna reconcile. So, one has to have faith in that process, if you don't, well, then, you're built, then I would recommend that you not, um, approve it. Um.
One question is your notification to the neighborhood. How many, how many people get notified for a conditional use permit, on what area do you cover?
Three hundred and fifty feet from the property, basically.
So, if somebody is out there in Timbuktu and nobody shows up and there's, and the one person says, see, there's nobody here. The council looks and says, no objection, why wouldn't the home be built because you are isolating them in such a small, three hundred and some square foot area is only gonna be notified and the rest of us council members are only gonna find out. And there's no objection, I'm, I'm curious on that part. And you asked?
One would, one would hope that through the review process, that, that neighborhood objection alone, or neighborhood support alone is not a reason to support or deny anything. You gotta take the proposal into context with the neighborhood.
Mark, one of the things that, um, I think several of us left last meeting with, at least I know I did, I should probably just speak for myself, is the definition of infill.
Right.
Because when you look at the definition of infill, the way I looked at it, it basically would cover any lot in town that is less than one acre. And if that is the definition, I personally can't support the small houses. I guess I look at the small house as an opportunity or a lot like you just mentioned. And there are several of those lots in town and I could see that having a lot filled with a small house, in my mind, is better than having an empty lot, if the neighbors don't wanna purchase it. I mean, if it's been there for years, chances are nobody wants to purchase. if it's been there for years, chances are nobody wants to purchase it. But if, if they have an opportunity to put a small house on there, I, you know, then I'd be in favor of it. But if the definition is, as I remember last, last time, basically, it's, you gotta be sighted by, by the streets, and I think the only other criteria is that it has to be less than an acre. There were a couple other things in there, but, but if I have a house, if I have a lot that's, um, forty, excuse me, eighty by a hundred, I could put, based on that definition, I could put a small house on there. I'd have to go through this CUP, but it's possible, and, and that's the part that I have a problem with. I don't know how others feel, but-
Mr. President, you're forgetting one very crucial element of that definition in the, in the staff report. It has to do with, with the phrase, in an un, in an otherwise built-up area. That is the key to that whole definition. A little bit wishy-washy, I'll agree. But that, for example, means that on the south side of North Town Street, that's an undeveloped area. You couldn't put a small house there.
No, but you could in town if you had a huge lot. You could put a small house in the middle of that lot.
Therein lies, that is, well, you could, through the conditional permit process. Again, you have to rely on the faith that you would have in the ability for the conditional use permit process to, to regulate whether or not it would be appropriate or not.
Can I speak for a second?
I lost my faith already because you're bringing it to the council with a four hundred square foot house, and I can't believe we went from a thousand to seven fifty to four hundred. And so you're telling me to believe in a conditional use permit. I can't even believe we brought this here. So, I lost my faith already. So, I can't support it.
Okay, I understand, and you guys, based on the whatever facts you think are the right facts, will make the decision. Remember, I'm the messenger here.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm trying to be as, as, as middle of the road as I can here for the planning commission's benefit because they worked long and hard on this and voted five to two in support of it, and, and feel strongly that what they've submitted to you, um, can work. Um, and I guess your, your statement, uh, going from seven fifty to four hundred, I, I couldn't quite follow.
Thousand. It's, it's, it's in the book, a thousand, and then you find a misprint of seven fifty. So now all of a sudden we decide, oh, let's make it seven fifty, and then you go, well, let's make it three fifty, and then there was some argument, let's go up to four hundred. It just kept dwindling. I thought seven fifty was crazy, and then it went down to three fifty. I was in all those meetings. I'm going, let's just get down to a fish house, which we are right now.
Well, staff has always been informing the public the minimum lot, house size is seven hundred and fifty. That's, that goes back to the old ordinance.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
You know, I, I agree with, with Mark on this. I, I think it can be easily solved when you're looking at page three, when you're talking about committing small house on construction with lots smaller than that size. I mean, that would be a pretty easy amendment to make on this. And, and, yeah, I believe, you know, when you look at the, like Mr. Shaw was saying, we have a lot of smaller lots that there's no way you can put a house on. The house I grew up on, in, in Sixth Street, was a row house. The house was as wide as a room is, you know? So you can definitely live in houses like that. And I think part of the thing is, is, you know, my first thought of this was, who's looking for a small house? Um, we don't have the market yet. But the part of it, though, too, is when you're looking at, at buying a non-conforming smaller lot, and there's nothing on the books that says you can build that house, you're gonna go elsewhere. You're not gonna have that market. You know, it's just like people saying, well, I don't ever see anybody cycle down X street. Well, you don't have a bike lane down that street. Might be why people aren't cycling down it. You know, I think if we can, if we can get this fashioned so that we allay some of the fears that were brought up, like your concern, I think this is something that's definitely gonna benefit the city. And, and I think those kind of fixes are pretty easy. I mean, you know, yeah, the, the, the square footage vacillated, but it vacillated because we had two different numbers, and then we were looking at small houses and the square footage on the houses, and that's just part of discussion. You know, and then I was one of the ones that said, you know, we need to trust, we need to trust government at some point to make the right decision. And that's why I feel pretty confident with, with the conditional use permit, especially if we put in an amendment saying that you can only put them on the smaller, smaller lots.
Comments?
Um, I gave this to everybody. Um, Laura wasn't at, at this point wanting to say anything in the public forum, but these were just talking points from them.
Laura is-
Laura, I'm sorry, Laura is the Greater Lakes Association at first. That's what this, the letterhead is on.
Yeah, yeah, got it.
Um, they, uh, these were just talking points because, you know, they looked at the ordinance, and these were some discrepancies that I would have a problem moving forward with until they're corrected. Um, and I think that we need to take that serious, um, as far as, these are professionals, these are attorneys, these are people that, that belong to this association, um, and are giving professional advice and realizing that we do have a serious, um, two hundred square foot, uh, in the R two district, that could be interpreted that way. Um, I've always had the problem with infill, again, because it was interpreted, um, by so many different people in so many different ways. But yet I hear, uh, what, what Mr. Pritchard is saying, and, and I guess my thought is, on small homes, is that they should be specifically limited to non-conforming lots, and therein lies my problem with the infill definition. Huge, huge problem with the infill definition, and I know we had a great discussion this week about that in correcting it. So my thought is, if, if we were to take into consideration even remotely talking about this, then it needs to go back to planning and zoning. The, the definition of infill needs to be corrected. Um, as far as non-conforming would need to be corrected, as far as correcting what Laura has, or the associated real, realtors here have brought to our attention, um, it just, there's so many, there's so many facets to this that just aren't ready to be brought here today. That's just my feeling.
Okay, first.
You know, I, I think part of this goes back to Mark's question, is, you know, if we do fix that, are we willing to consider it? Because that'd be a heck of a lot more work to go through that and come back and have it be five to against, or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, because, you know, if we have specific areas that, as planning and zoning, we need to look at, I mean, that, that first, the first concern could be taken care of easily by just saying non-conforming lots. I think the other two concerns are something that, that takes a little bit more look at the definition. I mean, personally, I can't speak for planning and zoning. Personally, if, if we were given directive to fix those two things and go back, I would not have a problem with that.
I think there is a market for small homes. You, someone said there isn't, but we don't know because we don't really have that opportunity here. I think there is. I think you'd be surprised at how many people, both young families or single people just starting out, would prefer to have something where they might have some equity at some point. Um, and I think older people who are downsizing and maybe don't wanna move into a retirement community might also like some. I believe there is a market, but I agree that those points should be clarified. Uh, if we at some point have an ordinance like this, we do want comfort level in the community. So, if the concept is what Mark is looking for tonight, we really shouldn't vote on the ordinance. Perhaps we can simply vote on the concept and then send it back asking for clarification on these specific issues, and then on the definition of infill, which I think all of us have some concern. So, we have satisfied we should do it.
With all due respect, the planning commission has made its recommendations. They worked long and hard at this. If it's language that you don't like, it can be fixed at the city council level. Easy enough for me to bring back a recommendation such as Councilman Pritchard has suggested for you guys to vote on. And I can also bring back definition for you guys that you think would, because if I go back to planning commission, and they work up another definition that you don't think is placed there, then we go back to them again. I would, I think it's-
You getting mad at us?
No, I'm just trying to be clear. I'm just trying to be clear.
That's what we're trying to be. Can I have one more?
One more, and then I-
Yeah, and the reason I'm gonna ask now, why wouldn't you bring now the trailer homes back out into the market instead of putting them in parks? Because are you holding them in parks because of the, the way they look? Or by their size? But in the same token, if I'm gonna open the floodgates for four hundred, why wouldn't I let trailer homes go on these non-conforming lots? Why are we not? Are you doing it because of the way they look? The size? Why isn't the ordinance looked at that? Why are they in parks?
I saw a video a week or so ago about homes that are made out of storage units. Look real nice. Um, to answer your question, if, if a mobile, if, if a mobile home, um, a manufactured home can be brought onto a site and comply with the, having it be on a permanent foundation, um, comply with the standards for a, a small house, being it, uh, in conformity with the, with the neighborhood, um, once it's done, a passerby could probably not tell that that's not a manufactured home.
A mobile home, mobile home park. You know, yeah, okay, maybe, okay.
That's a really separate issue, you know, a manufactured home, a mobile home park, that's a-
Okay, what I thought, mobile.
And one more question. Um, well, and I, well, I promise I will make it very short. Uh, it wasn't just so much the problem I had with the infill, as we talked a little bit about that, but, um, you know, one of the, the committee members had sent it, uh, some information in regards to, and I believe all of us got it in regards to, I can see this putting, maybe being put in a plan unit development, um, where the homes then would be consistent and would be conforming with one another, um, with their own association to take the stress off city staff when complaints, if they should arise, um, were to, to fester, I guess, um, because they themselves would be, for lack of a better word, their own police. Uh, if they can't get beyond that, obviously they get, you know, city staff involved. My, my other feel, and I can send it, but I guess I didn't feel it was pertinent at this point, is there was a survey that did go out to all the agents and the brokers and appraisers, and did get some great feedback. Um, a lot of positive feedback and some very valid negative feedback. Um, and a lot of it was more, more geared towards, um, yes, homeownership, fantastic, but the encouragement of definitely more rentals in town. Um, okay.
Just have a question, Mark.
Yeah.
Is there some results of the study? Because I don't think staff's seen it.
Yes, yes, they have not seen it because they did not forward it because I wasn't given permission to forward it after the, that's why I didn't, I guess, I didn't share, so it could.
Because, Mark's look of astonishment is because, you know, he sent out a big notice to all the realtors in the area weeks ago and got no response.
Yep.
I think he's had hair fall out as he's been sitting there, so.
Let me know. That's okay. I mean, again, it's one of those where you, you wanna reach out, and, and I, I tried to reach out, and I'm, I'm very thankful that at least we got some feedback, at least to go off of, that I'm, um, you know, and again, one of these were very valid corrections that I think just definitely need to be made prior to anything moving forward. Uh, you know, again, in that R two district especially, but, you know, why we wouldn't consider if, if the city of Raynor decided to move forward with small homes, why first and foremost would it not be on non-conforming lots conducive to the area um, within a, a minimum or percentage within surrounding, a percentage size difference with surrounding property owners, rather than automatically, and I always go to the worst, rather than in, in a, a neighborhood of a thousand to twelve hundred square foot homes, and you're gonna pluck a four hundred square foot home in there? You know, there's gotta be a percentage, you know, a, a median percentage, and, and, but it doesn't allow, it doesn't allow for this, because if it's a non-conforming lot, you automatically get the opportunity to put in a four hundred square foot lot.
Like I said, the staff report, if that's the consent of the council, that's great direction. I can bring something back to you easily if I-
Kelly?
Hi, Dale.
Do, do you still have a-
No, I'm gonna wait for the motion.
Oh, you're not gonna make it?
No, I was like a-
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that, um, that planning take the proposal, address those concerns, the three concerns here, I would say also the development concern and the definition of infill, and present that to city council for a vote. Do we have to reopen any of the other process?
Yes, I, I don't know.
Reopen meaning?
Like, you know, have nobody first reading, that sort of stuff?
This is my opinion, and, uh, city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but the changes that you're making does not require you to have reopened the hearing process. You're not making it less restrictive, you're making it more restrictive. You're clarifying a definition, um-
Have that closer, okay, then I'd also propose to have that closer, more closely examined by the city attorney, make sure that's the case, then bring it up for vote in the next meeting.
Yep.
There is no time rush, rush on, uh, time-
Would you like more time?
Yes.
Well, I don't think you're gonna be able to do it in the May meeting. We've got a full agenda. We're looking at June.
The June first, the, yeah, okay, the first June meeting then.
Okay, we have a motion on-
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor that, um, sends it back to planning and zoning to look at, right?
No, staff.
The staff, okay. Sorry. Send it back to staff-
That's why we're all here.
To, um, clarify some, some points of clarification and the definition of infill.
And identify the, the, address.
Yeah, yeah.
So we got a motion to second this, uh, oh, well, anybody in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye. Motion carries six more.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, we're off the public floor.
No, we're not, we're not there yet. No, we got new business.
Oh, new business. Second annual walk and wheel night, Thursday, May fifteenth, six P M. at Gregory Park.
Mark could adjutant to that?
Uh, we'll, I'll include that at the end. Is there any discussion? I think you've all seen the flyers, and some of us were there last year.
Mm-hmm.
And they've expanded it, and, uh, there will be-
And we got a pretty colored thing in our bracket, so.
And there will be council members. Um, yeah, so.
Will there be, um, will we be able to ask a team that there's no rain in it?
It's here, Jack.
Yeah.
Never rained in, never rained in Gregory Park.
I don't think we need any motion on that side. Moving forward, okay, public forum. Time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council, time limits may be imposed. Is there anybody here for a public forum? Anybody here for public forum? Last chance. Anybody here for public forum? Public forum's closed. Thank you. Mayor, report.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. And, uh, maybe by looking at my report, it was, it was busy last couple weeks, in a way this next week it looks, it's gonna be pretty busy as well. And, uh, with that, it was nice to have the sunshine, and with that, end of report.
Oh, thank you all.
Very nice.
My God.
City attorney?
As requested, I've got a, an update on twelve twenty-three Klein Street. Um, I have a scheduled, uh, appearance at the district court tomorrow, um, to seek an administrative warrant to allow the city to access the property and, uh, base the need for this to be the final step in that process. Um, I've submitted the material already to the court. Tomorrow's the first day I could get it before a judge actually signs it. Following that, I will be notifying city staff and hopefully providing them, uh, the assigned warrant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, city administrator?
Go report.
City engineer?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. A couple of items. Uh, first one, Anderson Brothers, our contractor for crack sealing is, um, presently doing that project, so, um, probably this week and a part of next week, uh, you'll, you may run into them, uh, crack sealing around town. Um, second, the, um, uh, project on Willow Street, uh, the resurfacing project will probably begin next week sometime. Uh, we think, uh, sometimes either towards the, the beginning to, to midweek next week, Tri-City should be mobilizing and coming in to start that project, so, uh, we'll be under construction there. Um, last item, uh, we've got some bad news. We've got a little problem with our skid steer. Um, uh, we've got a problem with the drive system on the underbody, and, uh, we're getting some quotes to, to repair that. Um, what we're hearing from CAT is that, um, this is typical, the unit's got about a thousand hours on it. Um, the, um, uh, but they're telling us that, uh, it's gonna be expensive to rebuild it, and we may only get about five hundred hours out of a rebuild. Uh, they do have a new, fully engineered, um, uh, kit to rebuild that. That costs about four hundred bucks more. Uh, but, um, with that, they're telling us that we can probably get two thousand hours out of it. Uh, we're gonna be looking at a repair bill that's probably a little over six thousand, so. Uh, we have the money in our budget for, uh, equipment, repairs and maintenance, but it's gonna take a, take a big chunk out of, um, uh, what we have in this year's budget.
I'm not very mechanically orientated. What is a skid steer?
I can't.
Yeah, it's a, it's a bobcat, this one's on tracks instead of wheels.
You know, when you talk about skid steer and then John Deere, I'm thinking, it must be the animals.
Can't use the word bobcat, because bobcat is a meme.
Oh, okay.
Just like, everybody just, yeah, like, skidooey.
I don't wanna do next, any ruins.
Okay, so, end of report.
Thank you. City Planner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items. Uh, first one has to do with the Wassa site. I did email all of you a copy of the submittal information. I, some of you could not get to it to print, and I've, uh, Councilman Orkinhagen, Councilman Pritchard, and was, and, and Councilman Coop have copies. Does anybody else need a, a paper copy? Two, three?
I dropped it onto, into drop box.
Hand me, uh, my, my email, doesn't matter.
So, Councilman Beavens, you're okay?
I'm absolutely fantastic, thank you.
Good to hear. Um, okay, so we got three. I will make sure, I've got two copies, but I'll, ready to go, I'll get another.
I just throwed in my, where is that, Wassa meeting?
City Hall.
It is a public hearing, or interim use permit.
In this?
Yeah. In this very room. Um, we've started working on the, uh, staff report. It's gonna get to be quite lengthy, um, I'll be getting information from Engineering Utilities, uh, and Building Department on issues that are associated with it, plus other Planning Department issues. Um, the, there was one other thing I wanted, oh, tomorrow morning, as in the audience tonight, is Vice Chairman, um, Norwood from the Planning Commission. Um, Chairman, uh, Plattenberg will not be able to be at the special meeting, so, uh, Vice Chair Norwood will be uprunning the meeting. We have a meeting with him tomorrow morning to oversee some procedures, and he has some questions for the process, so hopefully we can get on the same page and help, help Mr. Norwood out, as this will be his first time chairing a meeting.
What time is that meeting tomorrow?
The staff meeting with Mr. Norwood, with Helen, staff meeting.
Okay, staff.
And then seven thirty, uh, Wednesday morning is the Wassa Site Committee meeting here at City Hall that's been meeting to discuss the Wassa site. The other thing is, um, the Riverfront Committee had its second meeting, uh, last week, another, um, very, very good meeting, I thought. Um, the next Riverfront meeting will be May twenty-first, that's a Wednesday. The purpose for that meeting generally is to prepare for the community workshop open house that will be held on Saturday, May thirty-first. That will be at Central Lakes College from ten to noon. That's the, uh, anticipated hours, so, um, that process is, is moving forward, uh, Councilman Orkinhagen, Councilman, uh, Coop. Um, you two were at the last one.
Dolly was there.
Councilwoman Mattens was there for a while, Councilwoman Parks was there for a while. I don't know if there's anything you wanna add, but, after my report.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of Mark? And how many council members plan on attending the Wednesday meeting with the Wassa Committee?
It's at seven thirty A M.
Yes.
I don't know, maybe.
I'm trying to see if there's four going, so I need to adjourn to that.
I think we should adjourn, because sometimes people show up and didn't...
That's what I was looking for, so we'll add that to the list. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, uh, congratulate some of our firefighters that just finished getting certifications in fire officer one and also in instructor one, so that's another certification for the fire department and the fire guys. Uh, we also applied for a grant through CenterPoint Energy. Uh, we did receive that grant, and if you look in your packet, they will be at our council meeting, the first one in June, to present the city a check on behalf of the CenterPoint Energy to the fire department. And last but not least, some sad news, about three weeks ago, we received notification that we did not get the safer grant for retaining the two firefighters. Uh, one of the current firefighters who was given a layoff notice is actually still working, uh, he's backfilling for the gentleman who's on work comp, and at this point, we don't have any, uh, insight on when that gentleman may be back. So, it's kinda some sad news, so we'll look and have some other ways of creative ways to do some...
I have a quick question in reference to that. I, I was looking through the email that you received, and it indicated that there's a lot of material that you could look at before we were to submit another grant. Correct. And so I'm wondering if you have anybody who's possibly looking at that, or aren't you gonna think about applying again?
I'm not gonna say we're not gonna apply again. I think there's a lot of factors that go into that, and I think that's maybe some discussion to another meeting, but I think there's a lot of factors that between the fire department and city government, we can take a look at maybe doing something to do that again.
Okay.
For some creative ways.
Is the language the same as last year for the reasons that you did not receive the grant?
The grant was different this time, Gary. The first grant that we got was to actually hire two additional firefighters. The second grant was a grant for retention, knowing that the two firefighters on the first safer grant were going to be laid off, so we applied for another grant to retain those firefighters. So the language, if it makes sense, is similar but different. And I'd be more or less drawn to...
Yeah, and I wanna go over this quickly, but it just says deficient in the levels of details needed to receive a competitive rating. And I was just wondering if that was the same language as last, it alluded to, uh, this...
The unfortunate part is they really don't give you a definitive reason why. It's kind of vague. You can request that, but I think as the email says, it's, with the, the amount of money and the amount of grants that are out there, it's hard to give those...
Okay, we'll go more into that. Park Director?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick items. Um, first of all, thank you to the Brainerd Lions Club for donating two thousand dollars, um, that would purchase a flagpole, we erected that Buffalo Hills Lions Park, and, uh, that also includes a solar light, so the flag can be illuminated at night. Uh, we have a couple of free events coming up. Uh, the Bicycle Clinic is this weekend from ten A M. to noon, um, it's on Saturday at the Brainerd High School's Lower Site Parking Lot. Um, it's open to boys and girls for all ages, uh, there's gonna be, uh, rules in the road, um, bike repair situations, um, some free helmets, uh, that kids can, uh, receive, they need one. Um, this is in cooperation with the Central Health, the Brainerd backs the police departments, and the Brainerd Parks Department, uh, no charge for that. Um, the Free Kids Fishing Clinic, uh, begins at nine thirty on Saturday, May thirty-first at One Park. Uh, every kid will need with a, um, bag full of, uh, tackle, and their shore lunch, um, and some stations. And, uh, just another reminder that the, uh, Miracle League Field Grand Opening is scheduled at one o'clock on Saturday, May thirty-first. Um, we're watching the weather real close. The turf, hopefully, is gonna be, in two weeks, it looks warm enough to put in. Um, we're looking at a minimum temperature of fifty degrees at night, and, uh, in talking to the turf installer, um, that window looks like it's gonna be there. It takes about five or six days to install turf that is fallen on and not rolled on, and, uh, if God willing, we'll get some good weather and get that turf in, and, uh, be very glad about it.
Great. Thanks. Council President, no report. Any other committee reports?
Mr. Chair, it's not a report, but I would like to suggest that we ask our city attorney to put together a meeting for the council and planning commission, if they want, or whoever is appropriate, uh, on the open meeting law. Uh, I go to them every time I go to a conference at the league, and I always learn something. And I think we have so many opportunities to, uh, get ourselves a little more, uh, up to speed on what the law requires, not just on email communication, but other kinds. We had, uh, the recent where there was no notice of the downtown meeting, and yet I would have been there if it hadn't been Good Friday, uh, which I, that I moved on to the church, and, which I did. And, uh, but yet we had two committee members there. Now, you could make something out of it, it was perfectly innocent, um, and I think that happens.
You just mentioned that you and Chip were on the same committee, too.
We, uh, we aren't, either one of us really on it, but we go to the same meetings.
Well, don't throw me under the bus.
I, I didn't mean it that way. I'm, if I imply that, I, I ask the department...
Talk about the committee meeting that you two are...
No, um, we go to the, um, walk, um, Riverwalk Committees, uh, meetings, and others sometimes are there. My point is not to point fingers at anybody.
Everyone's why I think you are.
I, I didn't mean it that way. But I think a good meeting with our attorney would be very helpful to all of them. We have a new committee, uh, council member, she might really appreciate hearing it, because it does get confusing. And, um, I talked with him last meeting, he said he'd be very happy to do it. So I'd like to suggest you look into that and come back with some.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other committee? Well, anybody wanna leave? Actually, no, hold it, hold it, hold it. We do have to, um, adjourn to Wednesday, seven, at eight thirty, seven thirty, seven thirty A M. That's the Wassa. And to five thirteen, which is, uh, uh, Wednesday. No, it's a Tuesday, sorry. Tuesday, five thirteen for the, um, hearing for, um, renew, and then to five fourteen, and what time are you meeting, six?
The planning commission meeting on the fourteenth is six o'clock, yep.
Six o'clock, and then for six o'clock on the fifteenth, which is the, uh, walk and bike. So, with, anybody have any questions? Those, okay, with that, I'm gonna entertain a motion to...